I'd like to call together the meeting of the Board of Selectmen on March 14th, 2016, at 6:33 PM. Could we all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in its own nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. If anybody's recording, could you please make yourself known? We'll start with Selectmen's comments, and I would like to issue a reminder from the town clerk that nomination papers are due Wednesday before 5:00 PM in the town clerk's office. Do you have anything?
I don't at this time.
I do, yes. I want to share with you, I was at Murdoch today as a substitute teacher, Murdoch High School is on the high school side. And a representative from Google was there, and they were using the classes at the high school to beta test Google Expedition. You may have heard of it. It's a new app that they're considering coming out with, and it allows a teacher to sit with an iPad, and the students have, it was like a cardboard viewer, if you remember the old Viewmasters, only it had a smartphone in it. And by sending signals from the teacher's console, I attended two classes. One, we went to Verona, Italy, because the students are studying about Romeo and Juliet. And the other one, we were in space, looking at the moon and the moon landings in 1969. So Murdoch was part of Google's beta testing for that program, so it was really, really cool, and the kids were really excited about it. It was great to see them there.
Very good. Anything?
Yes, I do. I just want to let the board know that I've decided I'm resigning from the Audit Committee, and I don't know if someone else wants to, I guess we'll have to have someone else fill that spot, if anybody wants to.
We don't have to do that now, do we? So we'll hold that position maybe until Mr. Barbour is back?
Yeah.
Okay. I think I would like to mention that last week, Austin and I went down to the new police station, we had a tour of it, to see how much work has been done so far, and they have done a substantial amount of work to the inside, including installings, this double pump system, to make sure that, you know, there's no water in the basement, make sure that the air quality, you know, that were concerns of the air quality, that that will be cleared up. We also looked through, we saw the difference between bullet resistant glass and bulletproof drywall, is that drywall?
I think so.
Is that what it was? And we saw, you know, that there is space where the steel girders are going to come in, and so it will have its seismic fortification that it's supposed to have. You know, still a lot of work to do on the building itself, but the amount of work that's been done is substantial, and I have to say, we also toured the old police station, because neither Austin nor myself had been there.
Luckily.
Past the lobby. And wow, what an improvement that will be, the amount of space that they're going to have, and just overall accessibility. I had trouble, you know, getting my packet this week, because, well, they're, you know, they're a police station, and they have work to do, and they were customers, so it will be so nice to have that situation rectified. Public comment, is anybody from the public going to? Okay. Mr. Vine?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to come forward, I was kind of hoping that Al Galant would be here tonight. As a lot of you probably know, in October, and I, please excuse the voice, in October of 2013, Winchton was designated a Purple Heart community. And I happened to notice, as I was heading into Templeton a few weeks ago, that they had a sign up announcing that they're a Purple Heart community. And so I happened to mention it to Mr. Galant, and within two weeks, he and Wendy had responded, gotten the signs, and they've posted the signs on four of the entrances coming into town, letting folks know that Winchton also is a Purple Heart community. And I just, I just wanted to commend Al and Wendy for responding to a citizen and doing it so quickly. I think they deserve a lot of credit for that. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. I think we're going to start with the liquor license, public hearings. I think the first one is just. Just a change. Okay. Okay, the first one's a change of manager from Vesta Inc., doing business as Quick Stop Liquors.
Hello.
Hello.
How is everybody tonight? My name is Anastasia Halkerakis, Stacy, I would appreciate being called Stacy, I'm the owner of Quick Stop Liquors. I was the manager on record for many years, and I understand that the duties are 35 to 40 hours. Unfortunately, I have other responsibilities right now, so I've hired a very reliable young lady, Stacy Gerard, and I'm asking the board, and then obviously the ABCC, to accept her as the new manager on record. She does approximately 35 to 42 hours a week, has been very, very responsible. Honestly, I have nothing but great things to say about her, so, any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Will you also continue to be listed as a manager, or are you going to be removed as a, listing as a manager?
I had spoken to Ms. Dagel about that, and I don't know how the ABCC does it right now.
Okay.
I believe that they have one manager listed on the license.
Of record.
I obviously will still be the owner of the property.
Right.
And I probably put anywhere between 20 to 40 hours, depending.
Sure. Okay.
Usually, my hours being at the store are not the hours that the store is in operation. So I'm typically, I could be here from 6:00 to 9:00 in the morning, or, you know, 9:00 to midnight at night, doing paperwork, making sure orders are done. But she will be, she will put most of the hours of the store as actually in operation.
The manager of record, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And she's been tip certified, she's worked under my supervision probably for like two or three months prior to us turning in the application. Like I said, I've not, I have never had a manager on any of my licenses, I've done it solely myself, so it's actually an honor to her that I would actually pick her to do that, because she's been exceptional.
It's got to be in the name.
Okay. Stacy. Would someone like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the addition of Stacy Gerard to as manager of record for Quick Stop Liquors.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair says aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Have a wonderful evening.
And thank you, Ms. Dagel.
And next before us is a transfer of stock for One Stop Plaza Convenience. Want to read it? Would you?
The Winchton Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, will hold a public hearing in the second floor auditorium of Town Hall, 109 Front Street, on Monday, March 14th, 2016, beginning at 6:35 PM, on petition of Pierre H. Sabah, owner of One Stop Plaza Convenience Inc., 16 Main Street, on the application of transfer of stock, new officer slash director for the Beer and Wine Package Store License. Anyone wishing to make comments is encouraged to attend. Michael Barbour, Chair, Board of Selectmen. And I move to open the hearing.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair says aye.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
So, I moved the corporation to my name back in 2005 and '06, and I had hired a lawyer to do it. Obviously, all the stock and, you know, the paperwork through the state been transferred okay. The only thing, the liquor license didn't, you know, we didn't know that we had to have a separate application for it to be sent to the ABCC. So that's why I'm here today, just making sure, I want to transfer the license to my name. So, I've been operating here since 1988.
Oh, yeah.
Basically, but I've been.
So just to clarify, Ms. Dagel, so this is just updating the actual license itself that we issued, to reflect the correct information? Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, I will move for the applicant.
Should we close the hearing first?
No.
Move to close the hearing.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Dagel wanted to say something.
I just wasn't sure if you gave the opportunity for the public to speak at all, before you close a public hearing.
Oh, I apologize. Okay.
That's right.
Should we reopen the hearing? Let's reopen the hearing? Do I have a motion to reopen the hearing?
Motion to reopen the hearing.
Second.
I don't think it was ever.
All in favor?
It wasn't.
Aye.
Aye.
Would anyone care to speak? And a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I apologize for the confusion. That's okay.
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to move for the applicant.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Appointments and resignations. Thank you. Thank you. The zoning board of appeals resignation has received the resignation of Michael Potvin. Recently, zoning board member Michael Potvin notified the town that he will be relocating out of Winchton, and therefore needs to resign from the zoning board. It is appropriate for the board to accept his resignation. Is Mr. Potvin here? And I'd just like to, I'd like to thank him for his service on the board. I know it's, stepping forward can take a lot of time, so thank you. Should we make a motion?
I'll move to accept the resignation by Mike Potvin from the ZBA.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye. Also with our things. Next, we'll make appointments to the zoning board. Since the zoning board was in a precarious position with the resignation of one member and two other alternates being out of town, two people have offered to come forward and volunteer to become members of the zoning board. We have an application of Matthew Gwynn. Is Matthew Gwynn here? Could you please step forward?
Good evening.
Good evening. Could you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. So, my name is Matt Gwynn. I've been associated with Winchton for a little over 20 years, and my wife and I were married here at Bethany Bible Chapel, moved back to town around 2001, and have lived here, now living at 51 Brooks Road. I'm a Director of Engineering at a technology company in Billerica, have been there for about 17 years now, and so a lot of experience with managing complex projects and large budgets.
Oh, that's awesome. Does anybody have any questions?
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Matthew Gwynn as a member of the Winchton Zoning Board of Appeals.
Full member.
Yeah, full member.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we also have the application for Mark Landano. Is Mark here? Tracy?
Mr. Landano wasn't able to appear tonight before the board, but I spoke with him today, and he does want you to know that he's interested. My interactions with him, I see him quite a bit in my office, he is in quite a bit, asking, inquiring about zoning and things like that, and I think he would be an appropriate candidate for the alternate position.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Could I have a motion to?
Madam Chair, motion to appoint Mark Landano as an alternate member to the ZBA.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Please tell them we thank him.
Yes.
Okay. And on to the planning board. Greg Vine would like to change his status to being an alternate member of the planning board. He's notified the town that he can no longer remain as the full-time member of the planning board. Would you like to come up?
I'm not sure which resignation you need to take first, which position you have to fill first, but, right, I've been on the planning board for about two and a half years now, but when I was running for school committee last year, said that I would leave as a member of the planning board if elected, and there were a number of months that went by without anyone expressing interest in filling the seat that I was likely to leave. But now, now there is, and so I'd like to leave as a full member, to devote more of my time to the school committee, but because I do have some experience now on the board, would like to remain as an alternate member, just in case they, they need me.
Sure. Thank you for everything you do. We definitely thank you, we serve on a number of different committees and boards, and we certainly do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move to accept Greg Vine's resignation as a full member of the Winchton Planning Board, and to appoint him as the board's alternate member.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye. And we have the letter of interest from Kelte Kelly. Did I do that okay? Is he here?
I don't think he's here.
No, not here. Where he would like to serve in Mr. Vine's position as the full-time member, as opposed to the alternate member.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we appoint Kelte Kelly as a full member of the Winchton Planning Board.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye. And we would also like to thank him for his service. Permits, licenses, and applications, we have a voluntary boot drive from Charlie's Angels' Relay for Life team.
Hello. Hi. Hi. Hello. Hi. Welcome. Thank you. So, my name is Dorothea. For the past over 10 years, I've been on my parents' Relay for Life team, Charlie's Angels. This year, they happen to move to Nevada, so I get to take over as team captain for the team. We've done the voluntary toll booth here in Winchton, like, it's a boot drive, for the past, I'd say, good five, six years, I'm not exactly 100% on it, and last year we raised over $1,600 doing the boot drive, so we were wondering if we can do it again this year.
And you're aware of the town's policies towards the drive?
Yeah, every time we do a voluntary toll booth, every member that's out there has a DOT approved vest on. We have, if the, we have cones on either side of the thing, as well as one in the middle that we always put our permit on. We also have signs that are further down that say caution voluntary toll booth ahead, and then we put signs even further down, right around here, and then up over on the corner over there that say, again, voluntary toll booth ahead, and the big one that's in the middle says our cause.
Any questions? Any questions?
I'm good.
Madam Chair, I will move for the applicant.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye.
Good luck.
That was for the April 30th date?
Yes, April 30th, nine to one.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck.
This is four.
Okay. We have a Class II business structure change for NIX Used Cars and Repairs. Is anybody here representing NIX?
Hi.
Hi.
We did away with the partnership, so they said we have to change, take her name off the license.
So you're just seeking to remove one name, Jennifer's name?
Nothing else changes.
Yep.
Well, that and the business structure go into DBA, but it states that the updated business certificate and his dealer bond is on file, so it looks like everything is in order.
No questions?
No, I'm good.
All righty.
Madam Chair, I will move for the applicant.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye. All set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have to wait for 7:00?
Okay.
Do we have anything else?
Well, what about the transfer station? Is that on here?
Where?
It's not on the agenda.
Yes.
It isn't in the agenda.
New business.
Oh, new business. Okay, there it is. Oh, 7:35, okay.
I wonder if, could I move that? If I have a motion to move the transfer station piece up?
Are the people going to speak to it here?
Sure.
Mr. Zipkowski's here.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to take out of order the citizen request to form Transfer Station Study Committee.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye. All set.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have to wait for 7:00?
Okay.
Do we have anything else?
Well, what about the transfer station? Is that on here?
Where?
It's not on the agenda.
Yes.
It isn't in the agenda.
New business.
Oh, new business. Okay, there it is. Oh, 7:35, okay.
I wonder if, could I move that? If I have a motion to move the transfer station piece up?
Are the people going to speak to it here?
Sure.
Mr. Zipkowski's here.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to take out of order the citizen request to form Transfer Station Study Committee.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye. All set.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have to wait for 7:00?
Okay.
Do we have anything else?
Well, what about the transfer station? Is that on here?
Where?
It's not on the agenda.
Yes.
It isn't in the agenda.
New business.
Oh, new business. Okay, there it is. Oh, 7:35, okay.
I wonder if, could I move that? If I have a motion to move the transfer station piece up?
Are the people going to speak to it here?
Sure.
Mr. Zipkowski's here.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to take out of order the citizen request to form Transfer Station Study Committee.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Good thing I got here in time. I think I said in my letter, you know, I read the management letter, and it stated in there that the viability of the transfer station, long-term, was in question, but it also stated in there that the revenue generated was sizable. The, I attended the tri-board of the Board of Selectmen and the Finn Carmody School Committee, and I heard at least a couple of the members there saying, maybe it's time to close this. And that sort of got me thinking about this, because this is actually the second time that the transfer station was considered to be closed. Back in 2008, it was slated to be closed, and they had a meeting on March 18th of that year, and all the powers-to-be, the select board and the Public Works and all, couldn't figure out a way to keep the transfer station open, because we were losing about $100,000 a year. And I got involved in that in April, and at the June meeting, I asked the town to establish a committee, and they did. And we, we actually, myself and a few other gentlemen, we visited open security transfer stations, but we did it more for fun in some ways than need, because what was happening is, back then, they had the transfer station open five days a week, and they had three full-time people. We, one of the recommendations that we made and was accepted was to go to three days a week with two people, and at that time, we were back to self-sustaining. Well, obviously, things have changed a little bit, and before any real consideration is talked about to once again close it, I'd like to re-establish the Transfer Station Study Committee with the idea of looking to see where the problems lie, look at possible solutions, and coming back before the board to make recommendations, which you people will have to decide which ones that you think are viable or not. We are just going to do the legwork to do that, and Mr. McGalliser has consented to be on this committee as well. He had oral surgery today, so he couldn't be here. So it's pretty simple. We'd like to, you know, look into it, and we believe we can have this report ready for you by the end of August.
And how many people would you want on your committee?
Well, you know, last time we had five, and, but virtually only a couple of us went out every, you know, once a week to go to, you know, transfer stations. Right in the report was the easy part, just going out. So based on what happened last time, two people just seemed to be, you know, enough to, because you go to a place, you talk about it, you know, you hash things over, and the report is just a, you know, a summary of what you did. So two is fine, if the board feels more comfortable having other people on it, I have no objections, but I think two people, you know, could do a good job. Sometimes, you know, committees, if you have too many people, less gets done than a few people who just want to see the work get done.
Madam Chair, I think it would be fair to let others join if they'd like to, right? I mean.
Yeah, I think the procedure would be for anyone interested to send a manager, send the town manager a letter of interest, and then they would come back before the board, and we would appoint them, is that how it should work?
If that's, if the board wants to appoint the committee, that's certainly how it would work.
Okay.
If I could just chime in for a second, Madam Chair. So I'm presenting my budget to the board a week from tonight. In that budget, there is not a decision or a recommendation to close the transfer station at this time. There certainly will be some recommendations to modify some of the price structure up there, to try to make it a break-even enterprise fund, rather than losing money. Some of that, some of that may be restructuring the staffing levels and things of that nature up there. The Public Works Director, I, having a conversation tomorrow with the Union of the Public Works Department to try to work collaboratively, to make some changes up there, to make it more cost-effective to operate. So I'm wondering if the board will be, would be willing to allow the presentation of my budget next week, review the recommendations that I've made for the transfer station moving forward, and if the board's not satisfied, or a committee wants to be formed at that point. Certainly love to have any recommendations, anybody from the public has at this point, but I think we recognize as staff that the transfer station should be a break-even business. It's not, it won't be in fiscal 2016 either. We do have some thoughts about how we can make it at least a break-even operation, and just think it might make more sense candidly to. just think it might make more sense candidly to wait a week before you make a decision on forming a committee until you've had the opportunity to hear what staff is recommending on how to address the financial situation we have with the transfer station. Thank you.
Can I make a comment? You know, over the years, because this is, the transfer station is an enterprise fund, and over the years, sometimes the transfer station actually made money. And if you look back in the warrant, that money was transferred into the general fund. Sometimes, it lost money. We're not talking about a great deal of money either way. So, it is a, you know, we're not talking about big, big dollars. So, but the transfer station is a valuable asset in this community, and to close it would be, I think, you know, you'd find a lot more stuff dumped out in the woods, you know, and a lot of people depend upon it. Probably a third of the people actually use it and buy stickers, but what I've found out by talking to people and all, probably more like half the people use it, because they've all found ways to double up. You know, you take my rubbish, you buy the sticker, you know, and so forth. So, I would just hate to lose this valuable facility. Once it's lost, it's going to be hard to put it back in. There aren't many states that allow you to have landfills anymore. Massachusetts, we can't have a landfill, so eventually, we may be at the mercy of individual haulers. And the one thing the transfer station does, it keeps the costs down for individual haulers, because if the transfer station wasn't there, you know, the two or three people in here with all these containers could easily put the price up, because, you know, there's no competition. So, depending by, you know, what the board does, I don't think it does any harm to study it.
I'm just curious. Along with your proposals, can I, like, are you going to increase fees to make it viable?
There'll be, there'll be, that'll be a segment of it. I think there'll be an increase in fees, looking to remain, have the transfer station remain open the same hours it's open now, potentially go from two staff members to one staff member. That's what we're talking to the union about tomorrow, so there's a little preview for the union. And then potentially considering moving to single-stream recycling, so there's no need to own a pickup truck, a truck that hauls the containers to Jaffrey at this point. So, there's, there's, there's an opportunity to make it easier to use, I think, make it more convenient, have it less costly. So, the fees that we would need to increase, we shouldn't have to increase nearly as much as if we did nothing.
So, could we have this request moved also to next week, so that we could hear your proposal, and then work, vote on the committee itself?
So, certainly it's up to the board in talking to the chair about setting up the agendas for the next couple of meetings. I don't want to speak for Chairman Barbaro, but I think what he's looking to try to do is keep next week's agenda open just for the budget. So, if the board wanted to bring it back up on the 28th and have a discussion two weeks from tonight at your next meeting, whether or not you wanted to establish the Transfer Station Committee, that's certainly your purview.
Madam Chair?
Sure.
If I may. I agree, Mr. Zbickowski. I think it's something we need to keep open. It definitely serves a purpose. But I would like to hear the proposal, but even then, I think it would still be a good idea to have maybe someone, a committee, look at the options for moving forward. But I think maybe waiting two weeks to revisit this would be a good thing.
You know, if you did establish the committee, you know, and I respect the town manager doing the budget and all, although I find it odd, I mean, I was reading between the lines about the transfer station being closed, and now I'm finding out it's probably not so far, you know, far-fetched, but this committee could, I mean, you know, have a report ready before the town meeting, so that might make all the difference. So, I mean, if we might, who knows? We might, we might find, we might find gold there.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
You know, I, I mean, I would expect this committee to kind of work closer with all kind of the players, including management, going down to the transfer station and asking them what they think works best, talking to residents, because, you know, there's a lot of people that, you're right, you know, they kind of have their private, people that just come and take their trash with the bins, and that's it. But, and when you drive by the transfer station, it does have, you know, those people that go there, and they're very passionate about going there. It's kind of their weekly ritual. They go there on a Saturday, and it's kind of their time to get away from home. I do think it's important to try and see how we can keep this open, or making sure that this is efficient, and hopefully maybe earn some money. Therefore, I would move to form the Transfer Station Study Committee. I don't assume that you'll be visiting 30 transfer stations again.
No, I don't, I don't think so either, but I think what you said, I mean, we would be just looking into, you know, see if, because maybe we can find suggestions and recommendations that maybe haven't been thought of, or maybe we should look at again. I know we had a lot of recommendations last time, and because it was so easy to fix it, a lot of those recommendations just weren't, you know, needed or accepted at that time.
Mr. Zbickowski, do you mind? Do you still have your notes from the last study committee?
Yes, yes, I do, actually, and, actually, I was going through it. I have, actually, I have a binder about three inches, you know, thick, that, well, I will be going to, you know, we know some of the better transfer stations. For example, Troy has probably one of the best transfer stations around for a small place, and they're only open a couple of days a week, and they do a massive amount of actually recycling. And they do something that we don't even do. They do not have returnable, you know, in New Hampshire. But they, you know, pick through the rubbish, because there's a lot of returnables, and they make quite a bit of money on mass returnables. It's surprising. But, so anyway, I don't see, I don't see a conflict personally of having this ongoing while, you know, the budget's presented, because we might be able to make recommendations that, and remember, this is only a recommendation committee. You folks have to make the final decision.
I think it would be beneficial for management and, you know, the DPW and the folks down at the transfer station to kind of see possibly those notes and what you've got there. I mean, I know, I know you presented it to the town meeting a while back, but maybe people need a refresher. So, I think possibly forming this committee and opening the line of communication between this committee, the board, and management, I think that would be beneficial to the residents, to us, and to the folks that use the transfer station. So, therefore, I would like to move to form the Transfer Station Study Committee.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Discussion?
Sure.
I'm all right with doing, with forming the committee now, as long as it's understood that if you're interested in serving on that committee, send a letter of interest to the town manager, and then, so maybe by next Monday, if we have some applicants, then we can take a minute from our budget meeting and just go, and, you know, make the appointments, something like that.
We can always add new members. We, time is kind of short before the town, now the town meeting, but I think we can get a report done if we get, you know, if we get started.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just a quick question. Is, does the board have a number of members they'd like to have on this committee? They want to set that tonight as part of your motion, or play it by ear? When you want to establish a committee, I think you need to know what the makeup's going to be, so people are aware whether or not they think it's important to apply.
Up to five?
My motion to have those five members, have it be a five-member committee.
I second that.
I, we, I would say up to five, because what if there's only the two, then there's not a quorum?
Right, we'll bring, we'll bring forward, um...
Up to five.
We'll bring forward a, the list of individuals who are interested in applying next Monday night at the board's request, and the board can appoint those, and if they need to modify the membership at that point, they can certainly do that, so you have a quorum.
Okay, great. So, it's been moved and seconded?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Do we have to appoint Mr. McGalister and Mr. Zbickowski?
We can do that next week, probably, once you get the appointments.
Yeah, we'll do all the appointments next week.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't get that.
We'll make the appointments next week.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for bringing this forward again.
Thank you.
Okay, now, it's joint meeting with the Board of Health.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to recognize that we'll call the Board of Health to order at, I can't see the clock, but it's 7:14?
Yep. Thank you.
So, the Board of Health, Madam Chair, is seeking to talk and discuss about the pipeline. If you recall, the, this has probably been on our agenda since early last year. We almost talk monthly about what we're doing and the process moving forward, and I've been very vocal to the board, and the board has agreed thus far that what we need to do is we need to have a unified voice about what we're going to do moving forward, because there's potential financial complications because of a decision that we could be making. So, we thought that it would be appropriate to bring it forward today to get, to see your thoughts as a board, as well as your support to move forward or to not move forward with the proposal of banning the pipeline for natural gas through the community in Winchandon. I'm not sure, did you guys read the packet provided by the Deerfield Board of Health? The Board of Health has also reviewed that. We thought that they made a pretty unique argument, we'll call it. They cited the case of Arthur D. Little, Inc. versus the Commissioner of Health in Hospitals of Cambridge in 1985. And what that case showed was that the city of Cambridge banned, the Board of Health essentially voted to ban the transportation, testing, pretty much anything involved with anthrax due to public health concern. So, Deerfield and their environmental lawyers, as well as their town council, had decided the same. They thought that the precedence was similar. That case was fought, and the city of Cambridge won in the Massachusetts Supreme Court, and has been held up in similar arguments since. So, we, our chairman, who's out on medical leave right now, has voiced forward to follow suit with them, has actually reached out to their environmental lawyer that they used, who would also be interested in helping us make that same determination. So, what we're, and any of the other board members have any other comments, they can speak up at any time here. What we're searching for is, one, if you think that this is the appropriate action to take. If it is, then we'll continue our discussions, and we'll probably host another public hearing where we will invite Kinder Morgan and any other Tennessee pipeline company or anything to come to make their arguments as well. And then, any public, obviously, that wants to come and voice their concerns, either pro or con for pipeline. And then, if we decide that this is the most appropriate action, we'd actually like to go ahead and start moving forward. I don't know what the current state of the pipeline is. This was not my project that I followed as intently as some others, so, but I believe that the last word I heard was going through New Hampshire more now, but that obviously can change at any point. Do you have any comments? Did I say it all?
Madam Chair, a subject near and dear to my heart. I was on the original Pipeline Review Committee when Kinder Morgan first reared their head in New England two or three years ago now. I do follow it. A year or two ago, they did move it up into New Hampshire. Speaking for myself, I would fully support you working to put forth the documentation to ban the pipeline from Winchandon. That's where I stand.
Madam Chair? I just have a question. Can we, can a municipality legally ban a pipeline?
So, the, the context in which Deerfield was going under was that the material being transported through the pipeline posed a risk to the environment and the people by being, by containing certain chemicals and such, because it's not so much the pipeline that's the issue, it's the chemicals that go through and that are used to carry the natural gas, because it's carried in a very liquid-like state, probably not as liquid, it's not like water, but it's more like a sludge, if you will, I think, through the pipeline, and it's carried by a whole slew of chemicals, also from when they dig through the, because it's fracking, hydraulic fracking that they're doing in the shale. I don't, I think this is coming from New York, Pennsylvania area, and so it'll be transported through their pipeline from that area all the way to the processing plant, which is in Drakeet. So, what Deerfield was saying is that, from what I interpreted from that information, was that they feel as though that the material being transported through the pipeline serves as a risk, and that's where they compared it to the anthrax, and that the transportation and testing and manufacturing and all that with the anthrax was similar. So, that's where they banned it on that, on that purpose.
And I ask that question, because I was forwarded this from a resident. This was the Tuesday, March 8th, 2016 edition of the Menadnoklater transcript. The courting an attorney, which happens to be for Kinder Morgan, they're saying the citing and approval of interstate high-pressure gas pipelines proposed by private companies is governed by FERC, which is the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. FERC alone approves the location and construction of interstate pipelines, related facilities, and storage fields involving moving natural gas across state boundaries. In the event that any state or municipal law or ordinance conflicts with FERC requirement, FERC's requirement will prevail. So, that's why I asked that question. I just want to make sure that we can legally do that.
I think the difference for us is that in Massachusetts, this case was held by our Massachusetts Supreme Court, rather than, you know, and I think that's one of the reasons why, I can't speak for the real reason why they moved into New Hampshire. They'll cite some other reason, I'm sure, but the lawyer and Deerfield, from our recent articles that I've read and such, that they're very confident that this upholds. My personal issue with the Deerfield report, if you read, is that the citing of their sources are less than appropriate to me for a legal case. I would like to see, you know, I'll just say, I don't think Wikipedia is necessarily the best place to get legal content. I believe if they had gone and dug deeper and gotten to the roots of that, I think you would have seen, and that's what Chairman Lionel Clooney had provided to you, was some additional information. He went to further resources and not necessarily an online encyclopedia. So, I think that, and what, the goal for us today is to get the approval to use town resources, such as not only your support, but also our legal counsel, to help us in drafting the appropriate language and what we would do, and then what we would vote on, so that it would uphold as best as we could. There's not to say that the federal government wouldn't try to come in and undermine us and put us up to a fight, but it may not, it may or may not happen, I don't know for sure.
Have a question? My question is, the, you know, when you're talking about, you know, attorneys, you know, counsel, what's the cost and who's going to pay for it?
And that is the great question.
They're very expensive, yeah.
And that is, that's half of our, that's our problem.
Okay.
We, you know, we don't know how many hours this is going to take. I don't know what our legal counsel costs, but I feel like for us to ban this, if, we shouldn't do this haphazardly, because then it's just going to cost us more headache down the road. And if this is something that we truly want to ban, then I think the town has to be behind it.
Well, it, yeah, it's a good thing, and it would be nice, but, you know, I, I don't think we're going to have the money to do that. Things are tight. Mr. Hickey?
Thank you. So, obviously, the, another community has done this already and submitted, submitted that information to the board this evening. It might be worthwhile to find out, you know, what those legal fees were, just to get a benchmark and get a sense, so the board understands, you know, what the exposure is here. I agree with Sluckperson Salter, you know, the legal budget is very lean in fiscal 16, it's lean again in fiscal 17, so I think, I think it's important for everybody to understand, you know, what the... to understand, you know, what the, what the exposure is legally, financially, I guess I should say, to taking on this fight before we start.
You also mentioned, if we had to, we could use Deerfield's counsel as a resource. And I'm wondering, you know, again, the added expense of somebody other than town council, you know, what that might entail.
Madam Chair, so, our chairman, Mr. Cludier, had spoken to the Deerfield lawyer. I have not, so I have, I have work now to do since Mr. Cludier will be out for foreseeable future right now, in that the environmental lawyer had expressed that they would be interested in helping. Mr. Cludier also said that it was pro bono. I have a hard time believing that it would be pro bono, so I need to, we need to figure that part of it out, but, you know, I, if that was the case, I would just ask that our legal counsel more or less ensure that this lawyer is of appropriate person to be fighting this case. I would hate to go down the road and do all this work, ban them for Kinder Morgan or Tennessee Gas or subsidiaries or whomever to turn around and countersue us, and then we find out that the lawyer was not of the best mindset to be doing this. So, maybe the worst-case scenario is that the lawyer, our town council has to do more work, but the best case is they just sign off on that other lawyer. But we'll have more information about that in the future. I say now that Mr. Cludier will be out, we have our own little marching orders, if you will.
Can I just ask one more question? Are you aware whether or not the community that hired that lawyer, whether that lawyer was the town's legal counsel, or was that a specialized environmental firm?
No, that was a subset, a separate environmental lawyer.
So, again, I just, just to put everything on the table, it's something that Copman Page probably isn't going to be able to provide a lot of support with because this type of practice is very specialized. So, it's going to be something outside of what Copman Page will do. They may be able to assist on a very minor role, but my sense is that you're going to be looking at an environmental firm that deals with this on a much more regular basis than Copman Page.
Madam Chair? I'm trying to remember back a couple of years ago when the committee was formed, when they were originally going to be running it through North Central Massachusetts and the meetings and such like that. And I want to say somewhere I had the names of some environmental lawyers from this area who were very vocal against it at that time and were, as I recall, you know, saying that they would be willing to help. So, I'll go back through my, through my notes and see if I can get anything, any contact or any information for you that might help.
Thank you. Any assistance in this with the act of looking at it from a legal standpoint, from the environmental point of view, is the hinge point for me. I think, I won't support the ban unless it's, unless I have the appropriate language from a lawyer, because then I think that it's just, you know, we're just asking for it later on.
Right.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, you're not about to adjourn, are you?
Nope.
Okay. Before you adjourn, I actually have something to bring up. Over the weekend, a resident called me, they like to call me on the weekends, especially the nice weekends, and they were telling me about a property on Lincoln Ave Extension that was, looked to be unsafe. So, I took the time to go down there and take a look at it, and I don't know the number of the property, but they're right, and I took some pictures from the road. It's extremely unsafe.
Is that it?
That's the property right there. Mr. Bond, do you know the address?
It's Lincoln Ave Extension, I think it's after 421. So, Lincoln Ave Extension, it's after 421, the next building.
And the reason why I bring it up, and I know we spoke about this when the building inspector was here several weeks ago, this is an important issue. The, you know, the first thing that comes across my mind when I saw that was, you know, what if a curious teenager went in there at night, not aware of the conditions, and something happens? I think that we as a town need to do more to make sure that we protect our residents, and I'm not sure exactly what we can do, but I don't know if we can put up caution tape or, you know, the red Xs that were talked about or something, just so people know that this building is unsafe, because if you were to look at that building, the whole side has fallen through. And I think that we need to do something, and that's not the only building in town, but I think that, you know, doing nothing is not appropriate and not acceptable, and I think we need to do more. So, I think that's one of the things that we need to address, and I'm curious what the other members and the town manager and the Board of Health think about this.
I also went down, as a matter of fact, and that's not the only building, there's a building right next to it that's equally as bad. And I was mortified because anybody, they are, you know, when the building inspector was here, he said as long as they're secure. These buildings are not secured. It's very easy to get into them. Anybody could get into them, and it wouldn't be hard. And the one with the catwalk going over the road, I'm thinking, oh, my gosh, that's going to come down on somebody, and hopefully, it's not somebody underneath. Really dangerous situation that we do have to do something about quickly.
Madam Chair, I have been approached by multiple residents throughout this town of similar complaints, not only of buildings that are potentially vacant like that, that are in that bad of a shape, but also, you know, residential buildings, buildings that are being currently occupied by people. I know, I mean, if you drive down Spring Street, there's one in particular that just pops out at me that the porch roof is collapsing in, you know, and I have, and, you know, I know that the chairman of the Board of Health as well has received phone calls from residents complaining that they don't believe that their homes are safe anymore and have had relocated because of that. It's more common than I think we want it to be. I don't know if the process is efficient in what we have to do. There is a location on Pond Street and, I'm trying to think if it's Linden, Pond and Linden, and all that was forced was an orange fence around the facility. The owner of the facility is trying to rebuild the structure, and I'm not an engineer by any shape, but it doesn't look rebuildable to me. And these properties just sit here like this. We don't have the funds in our town to, that I'm aware of, to take these buildings down. But I would hope that for safety, you know, we, if you guys recall, we worked with 50 Franklin Street for some time, trying to improve that facility. Actually, what ended up happening is the state took over for us. They had state issues to deal with, so that was off our plates at that point, but we still watch, we still talk to people, and they're still very upset about that. I believe it's improving now. I think the property is being sold or the business is closing, but it may not be, but I think the last time I heard it was the business was closing, so it's common, and that's unfortunate. And these houses are everywhere, and these buildings are everywhere.
Madam Chair? To the Chair, what is, at what point does your authority kick in when you see a residential home, you know, that it's a rental home or whatever? At what point can the Board of Health step up and say, you've got to fix this, or you've got to do something? Where does your authority happen?
So, our authority occurs when we have a state sanitary code that has to be...
I'm sorry?
We have a state sanitary code.
Sanitary code, okay, yep.
That outlines what we can and cannot do. So, typically, it's, the health agent is involved. Our health agent will go out and will ask to enter the property for the inspection. If we are granted access, he can go in and he can assess the facility. He can cite any kind of issues that are going on, which would, if they're non-life-threatening, he can issue a letter to the owners for repair, which then comes to the Board of Health, and they need to prove that the repairs have been done. If the situation is threatening of life, the health agent with the Board of Health can actually condemn the property, which then forces us to find, to find a relocation, temporary relocation for those residents until the property is either brought up to code or not. If it's not, then we, the property remains essentially abandoned until it's, until someone decides to do something with it.
Relocated at whose expense?
The landowner.
The landowner, the landlord's expense, okay.
Yeah, and that's part of the landlord, the land, the tenant's rights. They're covered under the consumer, they're considered a consumer, so they're covered under the Attorney General's Office.
Okay.
And we have that information available on our town website under the Board of Health. There's actually a link for tenant and tenant rights there, but that's our typical process. In the event that the people do not allow us access to the home, we can then go back to the courts, and we can get a warrant to enter the home. That's very uncommon, and it takes a long process for us. We've tried to do it, actually, on one property here in town recently, within the last year. Fortunately, I think the property has not really changed much, but we're kind of in a standstill. The owner believes that they'll repair the facility. They were ordered by the building commissioner to tear down the garage that was a safety hazard, which has not been torn down, as I believe, yet. We'll get a report soon on that property since the snow is gone. We were going to enter into litigation with the owner to allow us to fix or to condemn the property and/or forcing them to fix it, which we have not heard back yet. But our counsel was involved in that initially, but that's the typical process that we have.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? So, I'd love to have you come back, you know, get some more information, I'll see if I can get you some contact info.
Great.
Definitely something in my mind and my worth pursuing.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, the only last thing I have for you guys for consideration is thinking about our Earth Day that we have coming up. It is an event on our Facebook page. Again, that's something that, I'd love to rename it Lionel Cludier Earth Day. He simply, Mr. Cludier, has done hands down the most work for this in the years past. He will not be participating this year, so I'm going to be asking my Board shortly in the next meeting to kind of help out with this, but we'd love the public's help, and I remember seeing a few faces from the Board here last year, and I'd love to see you again this year.
Is that on the, I'm sorry?
I was just going to say, do you have a day and a time?
It is April 23rd, if I remember correctly.
It's a Saturday, yeah.
It's a Saturday, it's the, I think Earth Day is on the Friday, so we're on that Saturday, and the hours right now are eight to two. We'll have the dumpster available again right here in the parking lot. We'll have gloves, we'll have our drink tickets. Cumberland Farms has donated drink tickets again, and we'll have trash bags available. If anyone is not able to clean up the downtown area, we're encouraging them to clean up their own streets, and if they need assistance in removing the trash, to notify the Board of Health, and we'll go by and we'll pick up. But last year, Chairman Cludier and I picked up a heaping truckload of tires, and we gathered, I think, about seven TVs, so.
Do we have this on our town calendar?
We don't, so if, I was going to ask the Board if you could get us some information, we'd be happy to put it on our Facebook page, on our town website, and publicize it as best we can.
Yeah, the Board of Health just picked this date last Monday at your meeting. I was unavailable to attend, so I'll certainly, I'll pass that information on, and it is currently on the Facebook page for the Board of Health.
You do a great job on your Facebook page, by the way.
Thank you. It's a team effort. Anyone have any comments on the board? So, I'm going to make, as a motion for adjournment of the Board of Health.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second motion.
And discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, and the Ingleside Project.
Everybody here? We opened our meeting earlier this evening, and we haven't adjourned it yet, and we probably won't until we meet again upstairs after this, so, thank you for having us. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're hoping to share some, what we believe is good news with you folks and with the town. For the past couple of years, we've been looking at various ways of acquiring the Ingleside property, which I believe everybody is aware of. It's up off Maple Street. It's called Ingleside, it's Ingleside Drive, actually, and there's 43 acres of land that are there, as well as some buildings. And we, the Winchon Enhancement Committee, Toy Town Partnership, have been looking for the last couple of years of various ways the town could acquire the property. And what's transpired in the last couple of months is that the Winchandon School and the town have been working together and have come up with a way to exchange the two properties. The Marvin School, the two properties, the Marvin School being the town-owned property and the Ingleside property owned by the Winchandon School. And they've come up with a way of exchanging those properties with no upfront cost to either the school or the town. And what we are looking for tonight, along with some discussion, is for the Board of Selectmen to come up with an article for town warrant, along with the town manager, that would put this before the town for a vote, to exchange the Winchandon School, excuse me, the Marvin School property for the Winchandon School property. And there are a couple of folks, I think, that would like to speak about that a little bit, but we really wanted to get your comments, concerns, and whatnot. But first, I'd like to, we have been at this for a couple of years, so I'd like to, if folks haven't been introduced to all the folks, I'd like to introduce our team. Steve Hadad, Jay Lilly, Elaine M. Rose, John Delain, Ken LeBrecq, Cindy Boucher, and Jane LaPointe.
And Linda.
And, oh, I'm sorry, Linda. And two members that aren't here tonight, Linda's here, but not here. Don O'Neill and Chris Provost, too, are also part of our team. So, before we open it up to questions and comments, John, I think you have a few words you'd like to say?
Yeah, just real brief. I kind of persuaded this committee to, you know, when I was Public Works Director, to work toward acquiring Ingleside. And just when I was a kid growing up, you know, I heard stories about Marchmont Castle, White's Castle, depending on how you heard it, and, you know, I never really thought much of it when I was a kid, but when I started working here as the Public Works Director, I actually saw the film of it before it was torn down, and I thought it was a sad thing for the town of Winchon to have lost that, you know. When I was a kid, I thought it was just some glamorous house, but when you realize it really was a castle, it could have made all the difference in the world for the town over the years. When I was a kid growing up, I also played soccer. I was a soccer star, yes. Maybe not, but I played up to Ingleside, and that's when they had soccer fields up there. You know, they have one now, it's kind of semi-maintained, but, I mean, we had, soccer was pretty strong. You know, a lot of kids enjoyed it up there, you know, in those years, and I actually thought it was kind of magical to play up there. I mean, just seeing weird, playing at Ingleside, you know, just beyond something, you know, at your school. And I'd like to see if we can, you know, save it for the town, you know, and make this work. I think that maybe some kids down the road, once it's developed, it may take years, decades, but they might have the same feeling about it, you know, playing up there and having the same experience as I did as a kid. And I just would like to remind you, you know, Marchmont Castle is gone, we're never going to get that back. It's, the town of Winchon will never, ever be able to, you know, duplicate that. This is our chance to actually save a piece of property that's 46 acres near our downtown that's just gorgeous forever. I mean, if it's built up with houses, we've lost it forever, but if we save it, it's forever. Long after we're all gone, it would still be there for the town and for the community. So, I think this is a great opportunity. We've worked really hard on it over the years, and this, we feel, is, you know, given the town's finances, it's been... town's finances, it's been pretty tough, but this, this is a, I think, a great opportunity to make, um, to benefit the Winchonin School and to, to benefit the town of Winchonin.
I think just to play off John's word, just a little bit. I've, I've lived in this town for twenty-seven, twenty-six years, and I've watched it, watched the town over those years, and to me, there hasn't been an opportunity, because of the financial straits we're in, the economic conditions we're in, I don't think that I've ever seen the opportunity for us as a town to give back to the residents of, of Winchonin like we could do now. Not only to the resident of Winch- residents of Winchonin, though, but to the region as a whole. You know, this could be, this could be a hallmark, a landmark, for us moving forward, something to really get our teeth in to move our town forward.
I would like to speak to that.
Okay.
I think, oh, sorry. I think to also, the thing that has certainly struck me, and I think all of us, is when we started this project, we had a lot of ideas about the potential for, for Ingleside and, and what it could do as a committee. We, you know, we really worked on, worked on that. And it, it, then there was this sort of magic, that we had those two fall festivals, and I'm remembering the first, well, both of them, when so many people came, and we had an information table set up for people to come and learn about the, the land. And it was that opportunity to speak with the people who live here, and also some people who came to visit, who, this was their first experience at Ingleside. They, you know, never, never even imagined what this was. And it was eye-opening to hear people speak to the potential of that property when they were on it and could see it, to hear their ideas and just, you know, their own sort of imaginings. And that took this, for me, from being an abstract idea, a nice idea for the town in my rational mind, to, I got it. I, it was no longer abstract. This was what the people in this town were excited about. And, you know, the possibility of coming together to make this Ingleside into a place that was of value to the community, really, then, then I saw it, then I felt it. And, and so we keep going.
So you all received packets from Linda last week. I hope you've all had a chance to, to look at those packets. We tried to provide as much information in condensed form as we possibly could. We do also have a full master plan that we'd be more than happy to share with you. I think, Austin, you've, you've received it.
Yeah, I have a copy right now, I'm still reading it, so.
But we have other copies.
Give me some time.
We have both electronic and paper copies, so. Would you like to answer any concerns that we could, or?
Anybody questions, concerns?
I, I do. I have a couple of concerns. My, one of my biggest concerns about this property is it's so secluded. How are you gonna secure it, you know? It's just, you, you can't see it from the road, if it's empty up there, and the town owns it, I mean, anything could, you know, the liability of it, and that's one. And then the other one is, I know, 'cause I live off of Maple Street, that any event up there, any, you know, even when they used to just have the soccer games, you have to have the police there, because it's so hard to come and go out of there, and you can't see the traffic, and people are pulling out, and it, it can be dangerous up there. And so, you know, what, what, what are you gonna do about that?
Anticipating those questions.
Okay.
I, I spoke with Police Chief Dave Walsh last week. He shared, and we can, we share the similar concerns. If it becomes town property, it will be patrolled, as other streets are in town. There's consideration for some type of alarm system and/or cameras that may be linked back into the police station. The other thing that we've been thinking about, and we, we kind of bounced this off of, off the town manager also, is maybe having a, a tenant caretaker on site. Currently, there's Winchonin School's teachers that are living there. And they will, we don't know how long they'll stay there, but one of the, one of the agreements would be that they can live there until the Winchonin School can find other accommodations for them. So they would be there, and then what we, we were, we were thinking would be to put somebody on residence, so that it wouldn't be so isolated, there would be someone there. And as far as the entrance goes, there is an alternate entrance that used to be used further west on Maple Street, that wouldn't be quite the same way, 'cause I played soccer there every Wednesday night for a couple summers, and I dreaded leaving that entrance. And that would have to be done. And I, I also spoke with, with Al Galant, also, to share some of our concerns, and, and he has some of his own, such as maintenance and such. And that was one of his concerns, too, that something would have to be done with the entrance and exit way. So those would be addressed.
Can I speak?
Yes.
With the entrance, I, basically, you have some stone walls there, they'd have to be basically cut back, and the trees would have to remove, just to bet, give you a better line of sight, which would improve, you know, in, going in and out. If it was gonna be used on a permanent basis, you know, once it was developed, that would definitely be one of the first things that would have to be done, so.
Yeah, it's just people drive so fast on that, you know, that part of Maple Street.
Yeah, but some improvements to that, that entrance way, cleaning out the line of sight, and, you know, maybe some, uh, some signage on the roadway would, uh, help to improve that. I still think that for something like the Fall Fest, you still have to have police present, because of so many cars, but, you know, for, just for general usage, I think with the improvements to the entrance, I think that would be fine, so.
Okay.
The town could benefit from, from traffic coming in certain places, too, so.
I can't picture the exact spot where that, that entryway is. Is it wide enough and suitable for perhaps putting in a, a turning lane, or some such?
At, at some point in the future, that would be enough, 'cause the property there, although it's built up from the, uh, the road a bit, it actually levels off behind there, so that actually, that could be cut down, and actually a turning lane, that'd be a, a terrific, terrific idea to get, you know, traffic out of the flow and into the entrance, so. And that would have to be, you know, part of the plan down the road.
Of course, yeah, okay. Mr. Murray?
Can I, I just wanted to add, we've talked about another entrance, so that you come in one way and out the other. Isn't that at the bottom of that?
Right.
So, so there are some options that we can look at, but our goal is to secure that property.
Okay, Mr. Murray.
Hi, yeah, my name is Jason Murray. I am a resident, also lives off of Maple Street here in town, and I'm thinking of this as a public health professional and not as a representative of the Board of Health. That being said, one thing to also consider is sidewalk and pedestrian safety. That is a paramount issue on Maple Street. Those sidewalks are, I do not believe that they're eighty-acre compliant, nor have they been paved or repaved in some time, so. And crossing Maple Street, I do very carefully with my children, and that top of that hill would be very concerning to me as a parent, that watches people fly through Maple Street, so I would just recommend that you guys take a look at that, and look at state funding for mass moves and/or open space through, for funding to help with some of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
So it sounds to me more, I'm an opportu- I'm optimist as opposed to pessimist. It sounds like to me that there's some opportunity to improve what's already exists as problems on Maple Street, that this might help that. Answering Jason a little bit, he said you should look at, I, I think it needs to be we should look at. I think it needs to be the town that needs to embrace, first of all, acquiring the property, and then, as a town, determining what the uses are gonna be, and how those uses and, you know, the, the measures to secure and do maintenance and, and develop the property are gonna be done. I think it should be the town, the town function, not necessarily town government, but the town as a whole, as a community.
Thank you. Mr. Hickey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things with regards to process from this point forward. So, so we've had, I've met with the entire group once or twice, I've met with representatives of the group. One of the, the members who has, who isn't here tonight, he's not a member of the group, but he's, he's been a big part of this, is the headmaster over at Winchonin School, and he obviously has an interest in potentially trading, trading the Ingleside property, so to speak, for the Marvin School. The process that has to occur to do that is there needs to be a warrant article authorizing the town to sell the Marvin School. Now, we can, we can get very creative with the language of the warrant article, and say that, for example, you know, that the, the town would be, is looking, are looking for bids, or is looking for bids to acquire the Marvin School, and those bids could include cash and/or a, a piece of property that's equivalent or greater in value than the Marvin School. So you, there's a way to, to, to narrow, I guess, the, the specifications of the bid, and I hate to say to, to rig the bid, so to speak, but really, the, the, you can limit the bid to a very few number of interested parties, potentially one. So that has to happen at town meeting. I think the committee came here tonight to try to get a sense and a temperature of the board, what, to see whether or not you want to move forward. There has to be a, a warrant article drafted, and can, and whether the board's willing to accept that proposed warrant article and sponsor that on the warrant, is something I think this committee's looking for, moving forward. I don't wanna speak for them, but I think that they wanted to come this evening and, like I said, get a temperature of the board, to see if there's any desire at all to put something like this forward this year. I think that the, the Winchonin School has reached a, a timeframe. I don't wanna speak for them, but I'd like to get a decision made, because if they can't, if they can't acquire or don't acquire the Marvin School, they've gotta look at other options to properly house their, their faculty. So I think that the, the committee here has, has done enough work to, to present this information to the board, answer any questions you have, and then ultimately, if the board is supportive of sponsoring an article, to, to bring that article forward, try to get the support of the community, and then do the necessary bidding to try to sell the, the Marvin School and potentially acquire the, the Ingleside property in lieu of cash payment. I, I don't think it's inappropriate, you haven't mentioned it tonight, so if, if it is, Linda will certainly kick me under the table. There, there are, there are appraisals scheduled for tomorrow, for both the Marvin School and the Ingleside property. We've been working collaboratively with, with the, the Winchonin School to try to get somebody who's capable of doing the appraisal for both properties, doing them at the same time, so the same methodology is, methodology, excuse me, is used on both properties. So, through, through Linda and the group, they, they have contracted with a company. We signed the agreements, as did Winchonin School, today. They understand this is coming in front of the board this evening, and if the board didn't wanna move forward, we could notify the appraisal company that, to no longer, we no longer need their services on Tuesday. Once we get the, the values of those two properties, we can get a better sense of what, if anything, has to happen from there, if there's a dramatic difference in value. Again, is the Winchonin School going to be willing to, you know, offer their, their property discount, so to speak, if, if their value is greater than the town's? But until we get that value, it's, it's, I think it's, at this point, it's up in the air as to, the mech, you know, the, the devil's in the details, so to speak, right? And I think the details, at this point, they've done a great job of trying to identify and master plan what the, what the property's gonna look like in the future, if in fact the town owns it. I think at this point, we've gotta get the appraisals done on, on both properties, get a sense of what those values are. I'm sure the committee will then sit, uh, sit down, talk about how to move, best move forward, and ultimately come back to this, to this board with a draft warrant article to present to this board, to see if you would support that and move it forward to the ballot for voter consideration later this spring.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, could I just, just say one thing to, to the board? I think that what you're doing is wonderful, it's great, I wish you, you know, luck in doing this, but I'm just saying for me personally, I'm a numbers person, and I know this town, you know, we, we're just, we're trying to get out of this, you know, we have the deficit, and, I, so I just, I can't support this, but I wish you all, you know, good luck, and if you can, but it's just, it's a numbers thing. We, we can't continue to spend money that we don't have, we just can't do it. Just, that's just me.
Madam Chair, and, and in response, I think, I think that's why it's very important, why we seek other options, how we can pay for this, you know, you know, other ways to fund this. I think it would be definitely difficult to ask the town to say, you know, come up with millions of dollars to pay for it. If we could find people that are interested, investors that would, would be willing to help pay for this, because I think in the end, I think this is a, a huge benefit for the community. And it, it's not overnight. Obviously, this, as you mentioned in your letter, this is a lo- long-term project. I wish it was overnight, you know? I wish I could use the tennis courts and the soccer fields and the, and the baseball fields, you know, but I'm realistic. I know that money doesn't come easy, but I think as long as we're aggressive in trying to find ways to fund this, I think there's plenty of people around that would be willing to fund a project like this. Therefore, I, I do support the project, and I would be more than willing to, you know, speak on behalf of the project and support. I think it's important that the town knows what this is all about. I think there's still a lot of people in town that don't even know what Ingleside is. I didn't know what it was until the Fall Festival. And then, like Jane LaPointe had said, when I first walked on the property, I saw the amazing potential. You know, I walked down to the beach, and I walked in kind of the main areas, and I really saw this as a, a great project for the town, and a great project for the region as well. So I, I would support moving, moving forward and getting it in front of, in front of town meeting.
Respectfully, too, at this point in time, we're not requesting any funding, and we don't anticipate requesting any funding in the near future. Basically, now, it's just to acquire the land. When I say acquire, to me, that means at no cost to the town. It'd be an exchange of properties between the town and the Winchonin School. In the future, if the town chooses, the community chooses to develop this land as a recreational and park facility, which I hope it does, then we would go out and we'd reach out and determine what type of funding would be required to do that. And like Austin said, we could look to see who would do that funding, if there's investors or, or we could, you know, grant opportunities and such, so.
If I may, to Amy's point, I, I'm, I'm sorry to hear you say that you wouldn't support the project because of the potential costs. I'm just gonna say, just as an example, the bike trail. The bike trail in Winchonin, the new section that just opened, and we were just talking about it, we were just so thr- I, me in particular, just so thrilled as to how much it's being used. I can tell you that the town of Winchonin did not pay one cent for the entire bike trail that's located in the town of Winchonin. Phases four, which is the clock to Glen Allen Street, and phase five, which is the one that'll just be opening up shortly, between just those two phases, the total cost was three and a half million dollars. And because Robertson Broadhurst did support us, we did get matching funds. Other than that, it was all state and federal funds. So it was three and a half million dollars that had been spent on that section of the bike trail, and we, the town of Winchonin did not spend one cent. I'm not saying that that's what'll happen with Ingleside, but that's certainly what we would be hoping to do, and hoping to get, we know, we, we know what the monetary situation is in, is in town, unfortunately, and we know that there are not a lot of funds available. So we would be looking to do something like we did with the bike trail. Takes a long time, you need to be patient, but once it's done, it's terrific. And we're hoping that, we're hoping that Ingleside can be used more than what the bike trail is being used. So that, that's our intent.
Okay, I guess what I'm saying, if I knew for sure that it wouldn't cost the town anything, I could support it. But even just the town owning that property, you know, there's the insurance, the liability of it. You did say, like, if the police were willing to go out there and keep an eye on it, you know, that, that's their time, there's a cost to that time, you know, there's a lot of, that, that I'm concerned about.
Can I, something? Madam Chair? My wife and I went to the bike trail yesterday. We were on that trail for one hour. There were at least two hundred people. There were Winchonin people, there were people from New Hampshire, they were smiling, laughing. That's what this town needs? Excuse me. We have to turn it around. I mean, people that grew up in this town vowed to never leave, but the younger generation, now they don't always see that way. So we have to show them, this is a great town, and you have to build it, and they will come. You know, I know that's a movie, but seriously, we have to make this town something people wanna come to, and we can do it. We're so close right now, fairly. I hope you support it, Amy.
Something else, if I could just add, just to think of, is if that property was developed for housing units, it could have two to three hundred housing units on it, and the amount of taxes that you would collect those would never match what it costs for school, fire, and police, so it actually, if it is developed and the town doesn't own it, it actually could end up being a detriment to the town in the long run, because the state will never give enough in local aid to... in local aid to, you know, basically, support that development, so.
Amy, if I can briefly answer your concerns, because I thought about it a lot over the weekend. I talked to folks, I talked to Chief Walsh, I talked to Al, I talked to Keith. I share those same concerns, and I think, well, well, wait a minute. We're talking about two entities here. One is the, is the Ingleside property, the other one's the Marvin School. We already own the Marvin School, and we already have those costs. I think, I'm not sure, but I think that we'd probably just be transferring those costs, if maybe not a little less, because we, from what I understand, there was a lot of maintenance on the Marvin School, Steve, this winter.
You have no idea how they left that for us.
So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping, I, I can't give you a hundred percent answer, but I'm hoping that, that'll just transfer over, that it won't be any additional costs.
And one, additionally, is that, I mean, that Marvin School is a perfect fit for the Winchton School. They don't want to see that building deteriorate in their neighborhood, so they'd like to, and, and detract from their campus. If you look at Poland School now, that building is pretty much gone, you know, because there's nobody that really wants it, town hasn't done anything with it, and the thing, same thing, unless the town does something, do something with Marvin School, it's going to fall in the same state of disrepair. And again, as Dave said, we're, we're switching those around, but that state of disrepair is going to end up hurting the Winchton School campus, a dilapidated building there. So it's something to, to think about, as far as benefiting them, too. I think the town's getting the better deal, too, but it's also something, and Winchton School is the largest private employer in town. To, to help support them and make their campus better, I think, is in the best interest of the town also.
And they'll be taking over the maintenance of the Little League field, and improving the Little League field, and removing that expense from the Winchton Little League over to the Winchton School.
Madam Chair, I just want to say very briefly that, yeah, I would support an article as you are discussing it tonight.
Thank you.
Melissa?
Yeah.
I think it is important to remember that, that the Marvin School is expensive. It's, it's, it's a very expensive piece of property for us to maintain. And I really, Austin and I did go to the Fall Festival together. We had a great time, and, you know, for, to support this going on, to the warrant with the proper verbiage, I think, you know, and the town can vote on it, but we had so much fun. Everybody that was there, and it was busy, they were having a great time. So it was, you know, just definitely one of the better things that I've done all year. It was memorable. The property is beautiful, just beautiful, and it, it's hidden. It's hidden back there. I'm sure we can, you know, with time, work out the whole pulling in, pulling out, parking, that kind of thing. But I would love to see it get to the warrant. I really would.
Get to the town, yeah.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question for tonight? Okay.
Okay. Thank you all for coming.
Do we need a motion or anything to ask you?
I think just, if, if the, I think, well, the, the understanding I have from the board is, is to, to, to have the committee come back, if they need some support from either myself, or legal review of a proposed warrant article that would address the acquisition and/or trading of property, and try to bring it back for the March 28th board, board meeting.
Okay.
I don't think there's a motion needed. I think that we understand what the expectation is moving forward.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What do I get next?
It's gracious.
Okay. Um. I believe we now have Seven Point Medical Marijuana Dispensary.
How are you?
Good evening.
Chairs.
Um, two, three, four. Looks like there might be enough.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Just right.
Hold on. You may not need them all, but, yeah. My name is Valerio Romano. I'm the attorney in, uh, for Seven Point in Massachusetts. I've been working with Seven Point for some time. We actually worked in Illinois together as well. I'm an attorney in Mass, been here for about five-plus years, live here, raising my kids here. I'm also an attorney in California, and I've been involved with this industry for quite some time. We represent a, a good number of the applications in the new application process under the Baker Administration in my office. We were very successful last time, and there were 12 groups that are originally brought through in the early application process, and we brought eight of them through there. So if there's any questions at all about how this process is working, about the rollout of the program, anything, I hope to be able to answer them. So I know that Seven Point had provided some information to the board, and I think it's important for Seven Point members to help to introduce themselves a little bit, too, and that's why you see so many people in front of you. I do think it's an appropriate night for us to be discussing the medical use of marijuana in pro, program in Massachusetts, listening to some of the things that came before, particularly the pipeline discussion, I thought, because I thought that was, that's a real big states' right or municipal rights issue. And we have sort of the flip, the juxtaposition of that with this issue, because where the feds are trying to tell towns what to do, in, in that sense, here we have the medical use of marijuana program that passed with 63% of the voters in the Commonwealth and an equal number in the town. And the feds try to tell us what we can do there, too. So I think it's, it's actually kind of appropriate and sort of an interesting parallel to some of the things that have been discussed earlier. So with that, just quickly, I would like to let the members of Seven Point and the people in front of you speak briefly and introduce themselves, then we can run through the PowerPoint and the efforts that we've made thus far in the town, and hopefully respond to any questions that the board might have. So first, I'm Brad Zerman. He's the, the founder of, of Seven Point. Brad?
So, well, first, I'd like to introduce my team. Jeff Bilidos from Marshfield, David Millers from Groton, Ryan Goldstein and I are from Chicago, Mitch Suzanne from Mattapoiset. So, real briefly, I'm Brad Zerman. I'm the CEO of Seven Point in Massachusetts, and so I was fortunate to work with, with Attorney Romano in Illinois, where we were awarded a license to open up a medical marijuana dispensary in Illinois. It's different where cultivation and dispensary are separate. We just applied for dispensary, and we're planning to open in May, in a couple months. Program's just underway for the first time in Illinois. My background is, also is in a highly compliant and restrictive industry with credit card processing and ATM. So I've spent my entire career in that industry for almost 30 years. I've had my own companies for about 25 years, and so when, when I heard about the industry opening a couple years ago in Illinois, I thought that it was an interesting concept to be able to help people get access to medicine, but also to be able to treat it in a really compliant manner. And I felt like my experience with having access to millions of debit and credit card numbers, and the fact that the ATM industry is considered cash-intensive by the federal government, similar to marijuana laws, that, that it was a good fit for my background. And so while we've been underway planning to open and designing a dispensary for a couple of years, we decided to work together in Massachusetts with the revamping of the program last year. So since June last year, we applied for a couple RMDs, Registered Marijuana Dispensaries, to cultivate and sell in dispensaries. We were approved in Air to, to grow marijuana there. We're under contract on a piece of land there, and so we were successful working with that town. And so now we're, we're looking at the retail aspect of it, and so here we are. And this is the first meeting like this that we've had for a retail dispensary, and we felt like this area in general was underserved from what we've seen in the marketplace with other dispensaries applying, and felt like this could be an area where we could do some good and provide access to patients. And, and so our local team helped locate the location on Spring Street that we presented. I think we forgot to write the address on the, on the photo on page nine, but it's 660 Spring Street. You're probably familiar with, with the location. And I think that's good for now, but it, turn it back over to Attorney.
Quickly, we also have Mitchell Suzanne with us, who's a career law enforcement, and he's Director of Security for Seven Point. And, you know, we've actually had the, the good fortune of meeting with your chiefs, who are also in the audience, and so, and we brought, we have our security director with us, if you have any questions. I've been talking about this program nonstop for the last few years, but we also do have a career law enforcement. Mitch, do you want to just quickly just tell them your background, so they can know that?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thirty years as a police officer for the town of Mattapoiset. I hit 55, I retired, walked away. I started a security company. I put boots on the ground at construction sites, warehouses, and private schools. Through a mutual friend, I met Brad, and we met several times, talked, and he asked me if I would be his Director of Security. So I've been his Director of Security, going through the process. I met with Chief Walsh about three weeks ago, David Miller and I. He had some concerns and questions, and we answered them, and we will continue to move forward, working with him as we go through the process. This won't happen tomorrow. It's going to be about a year or so before we're up and running, so we will be in town a lot, talking with the chief, working on security.
So I can talk some about the process in Massachusetts and where Seven Point is, but of course, you know, interrupt any time if you have, you know, I don't want to go too far off topic, and I, I believe that in the last application process, Winchendon had provided a letter of support and non-opposition for a cultivation and processing facility, if I'm, if I'm correct. And so Massachusetts, in, you know, the voters passed a law in 2012, 63% of the vote, in 2013 and 14. Under the Patrick Administration, there was an application process, which, you know, for good or worse, drew, drew a lot of heat. There were 17 retail facilities, depending on how you look at the lawsuits, brought through the process. Originally, it was 12 groups for 15 facilities. Massachusetts has, and Brad alluded to this, a vertically integrated model, meaning that there's really three main activities, cultivation, processing, and dispensing, or retail. They all have to happen under one nonprofit. So unlike many other jurisdictions where there's a grower, and there's somebody who's producing infused products, and there's people doing the retail aspect, in Massachusetts, it's vertically integrated, and there's no external growers, and there's nobody just selling, and there's no infused product or edible manufacturers. It all has to happen within the nonprofit. Now, when I say nonprofit, that probably sort of maybe makes the board a little concerned. A nonprofit, we're not necessarily want to invite a nonprofit business, so we are a Chapter 180 under Massachusetts law, but we're not a 501(c)(3) designated company. We do not have charitable organization status. We continue to pay property taxes, and in the event that Congress was to reschedule marijuana so that the IRS would give those, give a 501(c)(3) designation out, Seven Point would commit to the town to continue paying property tax, even if Congress did act here. Nobody's really holding their breath on that, but it, it may happen, and so we'll commit to continuing to pay, pay, so that even if we do become a public charity, that would happen. So in, on June 29th of 2015, Governor Baker reopened the application process. Today, there are somewhere between 160 and 180 applications, with about 80-some groups applying, some for more than one. The max you can have is three retail locations under one nonprofit. So that's sort of the status of the application process. Seven Point has actually gotten very far in the application process. They submitted their application of intent, were invited back by the Department of Public Health to submit a management and operations profile, which they did. That was received well, and now they've been invited back to submit the sighting profile, which is essentially the third phase of the application process before you get a provisional registration. And so in, in order to submit your sighting profile, you have to show that you can cultivate, process, and dispense. So we have the cultivation and processing aspect of it down in Air. We have, like Brad said, we got a, a letter of support and non-opposition from the Board of Selectment and Air, and now we're trying to isolate where we want to do the dispensing or retail portion of it. And so as soon as we get that worked out, if we're lucky enough to be in Winchendon, we would submit that to the Department of Public Health, and hopefully, within a few weeks or a couple months, we would get a provisional registration. At provisional registration, then you start working with the Department of Public Health on their thorough security and architectural vetting. And I've done a bunch of these with the department, and they come in, and they look at every single part of your plan, where every camera is, where every door is, your limited access areas. They tell you to close up certain doors and add cameras over here, and where's your safe, and where's your vault, and, and how is your cash getting dealt with? And so fortunately, in Massachusetts, we do have a bank, Century Bank, in Medford, has decided to work with the industry, and so we do have, there's a lot of stories about banking and the difficulty, and cash just gets stored up in vaults. No, we'll have frequent cash sweeps from the, from the front of the house into safes, and that will be brought over to Century frequently. So that's not an issue that we have here. And so after, after you get through all that process with the department, eventually they'll give you a final registration, and at that point, you can start cultivating. Four or five months after that is probably, is when your, will open. So we're looking at a solid year, at least, down the road, if, if we're lucky enough to get a letter of support and non-opposition from the board here, before we would actually be able to open. And so that's ultimately what the procedural, what we're here for tonight, is to solicit this letter of support and non-opposition from the board for that location. So I hope that sort of sums up where we are in the process. In the, in the handout that, that Brad and Seven Point provided, you have some, some floor plan, you have a picture of the, of a rendering of the Air facility, then you have what the floor plan and the build-out of what they're doing in Illinois will look, is looking like. You have a copy of the letter of support and non-opposition from Air. You have the invitation from the Department of Public Health to submit our sighting profile, which is the third stage before you get a provisional registration. Then you have a picture of 660 Spring Street, and some discussion of what Seven Point's doing in Illinois, and then a, a little bit of detail in a letter about, you know, what the impact of having just the dispensary and not the cultivation and processing. And so that's, that's sort of where we are. That's the, you know, in a nutshell, the presentation. If you'd like to speak with other members of Seven Point, we have a good number of us here, and I have also, and I think you have gotten this in your packet, but I also have the template of the letter of support and non-opposition that's provided by the Department of Public Health. And I, as much or as little as you want to know about that, I've done this in a bunch of towns, and the, the template is valuable, because last time around, there were these letters put out, and then they weren't necessarily followed through with by the town in some places. Haverhill, for instance, was one of them. And so the, this time around, the Department of Public Health issued this templates for, to, for guidance for the board. One thing to know about that template is, it'd be great to have that minimum language, but if there's anything else that the board is concerned with, there's no problem amending and adding to that template. And so I think that's valuable for towns. So that's, that's where we're at. I hope there's some questions we can answer.
Madam Chair? Just, just a couple of things, I guess if I could, just to follow up with, with what...
Val's fine.
Attorney Romano, or Val, mentioned. So the property that they're, they're discussing is, excuse me, at 660 Spring Street, which is currently the, the Carriage House Restaurant. I just, again, we've talked about the site, we talked about the address, let's just put it out there where it is. Our zoning here in Wincheton, excuse me, the type of, the type of, of business that this would be characterized in Wincheton, and I think elsewhere, correct me if I'm wrong, is a retail store. So according to the zoning bylaws, a retail store like this is allowed in the C1 zone, which is highly commercial, as well as the C2 zone, which is neighborhood business. The, the state law, I believe, for distance away from congregating children, whether it be a daycare, a school, things of that nature, is 500 feet. Tracy Murphy's here this evening, and she can, I think, probably speak to this better than I, but we, we put, we put together, I shouldn't say we, Tracy put together a map that shows that the, the closest area that could be, I guess, potentially, arguably called a congregational, congregating area for kids would be the, the bike path. That's 600, between 600 and 650 feet away from, from, from the, the building itself. You've actually got that, 680, 98 feet from the, from the building itself. So it fits with, with... So it fits with, within the criteria. I guess from staff's point of view, as somebody mentioned from the group here this evening, they've had an opportunity to sit down and speak to Chief Walsh and discuss some of the concerns he had. I think it was a very positive meeting. I guess I characterized that a week, week and a half ago. From my point of view and in talking to the town's legal staff, what they're recommending is to hear what the, hear what the group from Seven Point has to say this evening. Take it under advisement if the board is comfortable with the location that they're proposing this evening to allow staff and I to sit down with Representative from Seven Point and try to come to some type of an agreement on what the expectations are, how the security's going to be addressed, to the satisfaction of the police chief, any concerns the fire chief may have with regards to life safety issues and what the potential impact of this, of a facility like this is going to have on the infrastructure in the town of Winchandon. So we would, so as far as staff goes, we're looking for some guidance from the board as to whether or not, A, you think this location is reasonable. If it's not, the board has the authority to deny or not issue a letter of, that they've suggesting this evening. We're looking for some direction as to, like I said, as to whether or not the site that has been proposed this evening is satisfactory to the board tonight and we can move forward if it is. One question I guess I have, and it's just my own ignorance, so I apologize. If, if in fact, medical marijuana is legalized in some amount in the future, what then happens to your dispensary?
So I mean, there's a, I think there's a few questions sort of wrapped up in there. The first one, I think, on its face is, will the dispensary be able to survive as a medical marijuana dispensary if there's non-medical or recreational marijuana? And so in Colorado, after Amendment 64 passed, the overall volume of medical sales actually went up. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that recreational or non-medical is taxed at a significantly higher rate. And so patients continue to go to medical use of marijuana dispensaries. And so, and that has a lot to do with tax. There's also another issue is that medical marijuana, and I always laugh at this, I usually say medical use of marijuana because I think, well marijuana is marijuana, what's medical marijuana? But in fact, at the end of the day, there are these high CBD strains and these tinctures and infused products that have no psychoactive properties whatsoever. And you've sort of famously, Sanjay Gupta has talked about a little girl in Colorado named Charlotte who's reduced her seizures from thousands a month to just a few. There's actually a couple of those in the Commonwealth. We are in, another one of my groups were in Georgetown, for instance, and there's a mom who has a daughter like that who has perpetual seizures. And they come to the meetings and they've been very strong proponent. We've actually got a letter from the selectmen there and we in fact got a special permit for our site last week. So they're really, this non-psychoactive property, there is such a thing in fact, in the long run, as medical marijuana. And so that's another thing, the non-medical recreational sales are never going to have, you know, there's no reason to sell stuff without, with a non-psychoactive property. So, so one is that it costs less and then two is that you're actually selling a slightly different product and you're making these infused products. This is more biotech at this point than it is growing marijuana and selling it. There is supercritical CO2 extraction that will happen in air where they really fracture this down into its smallest parts. And somebody with MS, for instance, who comes in, doesn't come in and buy a bag of marijuana, they buy something with a label that has consistent dosaging of exactly what you're producing. So whatever there's CBD, CBN, THC, there's nine main, you know, ingredients they test for. And testing is a big part of the program in Massachusetts as well. But people are getting consistent quality medicine in mass. You're not just buying a bag of marijuana if you're trying to treat an illness. And it's actually, you know, you'll get it in gel caps or some other infused form for exactly what you need. So it's, we've gone a long way from, from when I was in college and before to where the medical marijuana program is.
I'd like to just add one thing, if I may. So although we're not open for business in Illinois yet, we essentially have been open for a year since we received our provisional registration in February last year. So I hired a clinical social worker from the town where we're opening our dispensary. And so her, her picture is in this, I think it's a Chicago Tribune article on the last page. So we've been doing patient education sessions and so I'm on both of the industry boards. I'm the director of both industry associations in Illinois. We've been on the forefront of patient education. Illinois isn't as fortunate as Massachusetts in that we're way behind on issuing medical cards to patients there. We maybe have 5,000 patients to your 25,000 patients. And so it's really, it's a really, we make a positive impact by going into town libraries and town halls where we educate the public, whether that public is just people that happen to be in the library that day or people looking for a job from that town or patients who want to get a medical card. So we help them certify for, for the card. And when Valerio's talking about this being, you know, medical and scientific, I toured one of the cultivators in Joliet, Illinois last week. And although I would say half of the 20,000 square facility was plants being grown in rooms, which was interesting, the far more interesting part of it was that the other half was like really a scientific laboratory and people dressed appropriately, where, you know, there's just all this testing equipment and manufacturing going on because it's really, it's science, the ratios of the CBD to the THC. And so my clinical social worker, even though we're not open, she's working on medical teams with psychiatrists and pain doctors and physicians who never probably would have ever expected that they would be certifying patients for this medicine, that they're learning about it. And they're, they're certifying patients with very high CBD, almost no THC levels, and that's what they prefer. And so we follow the guidance from the physicians and we want to start out patients at that high level and then as appropriate, if they need to adjust, because THC is valuable for, as medicine too, these are the kinds of experiences that I've had just in the last year and we're not even open yet. So, you know, we look forward to establishing those kinds of programs, you know, in Massachusetts and having it be really about, you know, very lab oriented and medicine based.
So does that answer your question about, about non-medical? Great.
The property that you're looking at, is it just the restaurant or is it the motel that's right alongside of it?
My understanding about that, I thought that might come up, is that the, those businesses split years ago and it's just, it's just the restaurant and the property that the restaurant is on.
There would be a motel next door?
Yeah, that's not part of this.
Okay.
And I believe there's a representative of, from the property owners here tonight, I believe.
No.
Maybe not.
That would have been my question as well.
Yeah.
Having the hotel near, it just looks-
Yeah, the motel's not part of this.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
I think there's roughly above 14 acres though, which is the property that that restaurant sits on.
Can I, can I ask really what first interested you about that property? I know, right now I know it as a restaurant and it seems like it gets a lot of business and it's pretty popular. I like going there for brunch. So what really interested you about this property and are you aware of other properties in Winchandon that would possibly interest you as well?
Well, so, you know, some of our people that are local here on our team have been really focused on finding properties. And, you know, this is a pretty restrictive business. So, you know, regarding various towns that have even more restrictive policies and bylaws regarding, you know, the properties and more restrictive than the state, your town actually has, I think, a lot of flexibility in that you didn't adopt more restrictive bylaws, which is very similar to where we are in Illinois, the same kind of town, you know, rules. So it's just sometimes a factor of what works within the law. And so you're finally left with very few choices. I heard the brunch is very good. I'm looking forward to going there. But, you know, the, this is really sometime in the future because it's going to take us time. Even if you agreed to provide us what we need today, we still would have the work that needs to be done with the state and then they would still evaluate it. And if we're lucky enough to be approved and Winchandon is a partner of ours, then we still need to build a cultivation facility in air. That's going to take some time to build a building. We don't have the building on the land right now. So, so those brunches I think would go on for quite some time. And, and we've had discussions with, with the principals of the restaurant that, you know, they're planning on staying open during this entire time while we're, while we're going through this process. And, and if they so chose could remain on that property, we are totally open to working with the restaurant. It's 14 acres. So if they want, if they wanted to build a facility or for us to build them a facility and lease back their restaurant so they could continue on, if that's something they want to do, we would be totally open to working with them on that.
Is this just a retail operation or is there also cultivation, so no cultivation at all?
Right.
Because I do know from my brief looking at what was given to us, and there's a lot there, but do you also have the ability to cultivate on this property as well if you'd like?
Yes, we could cultivate. We, like Valerio said, we've gone through the process in air, received their letter of non-opposition. And so for now, we intend to cite our cultivation facility in air. However, we have two applications in and we could submit a third application if we found three viable dispensary locations and received three letters of support and non-opposition. Then it's possible we could potentially, if that was something you guys wanted to talk about, we could potentially grow, have a smaller facility in air and we could have a facility in Winchandon. It would be allowed by law.
Can you tell us a little bit more about security? Because I think that's one of the-
Sure.
-bigger topics as well that I think people are concerned about.
Yeah.
Maybe Mr. Suzanne, if you want to get involved and-
Let me, let me say one thing and then I'll let Mr. Suzanne get involved. I wanted to let you know that, you know, something we've been working on for quite some time is our security in Illinois because we're selecting a security system vendor this week. We've gotten about five bids and I can just tell you, just to give you the idea, just conceptually, the price tags of the security systems are between 65 and $125,000. So that would consist of between 25 and 30 cameras in the building and around the building as well as, you know, dividing up all the various rooms. And we probably have about 10 rooms in Illinois that have public access, limited access, and restricted access areas. So, you know, all the employees will have the badges of the, I forget what you call it. Mitch? You know, the, where you have to show the badge, electronically buzzes the door open and the, the security person up front who will scan the card to make sure it connects with the state and they're actually a bona fide card holder checking their ID. And so, so we have designed the system, our four plans in there along with, it's small so it's hard to read. We could provide, you know, bigger, bigger copies for you if you wanted to. But we have these plans that also show where all the cameras are on site and where, how all those doors work and the wiring for all those doors. That's all in this package. So, you know, these are all restrictive things that the state requires. Before we open, you know, we're going to have inspection by the state and they're going to make sure that we have one to two cameras in every room, including closets, as well as all these restricted and limited access areas and the door buzzers and panic alarms and all that. So we're confident we'll pass with flying colors and Massachusetts has their own rules regarding that. And Mr. Suzanne will assist us and guide us, just like, you know, we did with Illinois. And we'll, we'll, we'll use our floor plan that we think's a winner in Illinois and emulate that in Massachusetts. And, you know, similar sized spaces, we'll be able to use the same floor plan and use kind of whatever already works.
Excuse me, the chief had some concerns about security. One is transport, transportation to the, to the site, to the dispensary. He said he doesn't have the manpower and I said, we would cover that. So we would cover the transportation, covering the security, transporting the medical marijuana to the dispensary. There'll be at least two to three security personnel on site. You're going to be coming in and it's just not going to be, come in at your own. You have to come in by appointment. You have to show your ID, your medical card to get in. And then you're inside, like Brad said, you're inside, your name's put into the database, statewide database to make sure that you're not bouncing around from dispensary to dispensary and having fun and selling it outside. So once you pass that, you're brought inside to a nurse, someone to help you decide what you need, what your doctor's prescribing for you and then through the process. And then further in and then come out. So it's basically one in, one out at appointment times.
Now, do you call them customers or patients? I'm not sure. Forgive us, we all don't really know much about-
Well, I think the state calls them patients.
Okay.
So it's commonly referred to as patients in our industry.
So after the first appointment, after, you know, they get their, their medical marijuana, are those strains, are they tracked? You know, I think I read an article-
Yeah, so, so we-
Colorado.
We're subscribing to seed, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We're subscribing, we're subscribing to seed to sale tracking systems, as they call it. And so in Illinois, and it'll be very similar, if not the exact same, in Massachusetts, where when you plant, like in Illinois, it's different. So there are cultivators that will, will tag the plant when it's a seed and then as it grows and they take the material from that and whether they sell it in that form as flour or if they manufacture other products like edibles or oils, they'll be able to go into their, their system and say exactly what they did with that product and to what forms and what quantities. And so it will be tracked all the way through their manufacturing process until they, until they ship it out. And so if they track in Illinois that they'll, that they're selling us, let's say a pound of something, just for simplicity, we'll receive it and we'll check that pound in. And every time we move it from our nighttime vault to our daytime selling area, we have to move it within that program as well. So it's really tracked all the time until it's sold to the end user. And the state of Illinois has access to that online system so that they can see what's being sold and bought and grown at any time. All the manufacturers and dispensaries are in the same system. And so, so it'll work the same way. And, and so that's really important because in Illinois and like Massachusetts, a patient or customer can only purchase a certain quantity within a certain time period. And so all of that information is tracked inside that system to prevent any patients from purchasing more than the state allotted quantities. And so it's very safe and secure in that regard. Also, all those cameras in Illinois, we will make the IP address available to local and state law enforcement if they want it. We would do the same thing in Massachusetts. So all of our cameras, everything that's being filmed all the time and it's 24/7 in Illinois, you know, we would make that available to local law enforcement so they could see what's going on at any time. Or if there happened to be some issue, they could flip it and see what's going on if some alarm went off, which I think would be unusual. When Mitch talked about deliveries, I think that's really important. I want to mention that although we're not able to do it in this regard in Illinois at our facility because we're in an office building there, at this location on Spring, we would build a secure garage so that when we brought in the shipment, because it's probably going to be our own personnel driving the product to our dispensary, we would do that in an enclosed, secure facility. So we would just drive it to a garage, it would be attached to our dispensary and we would close the garage and it would be very secure.
As far as just a little bit more on the seed to sale tracking, there's lot and batch numbers associated with every piece of product that's produced. So if it's infused product or, you know, some marijuana, you'll be able to tell later on by looking at the container that it's in, in fact, where, which portion of the cultivation facility it was grown in. So that's good for recalls, that's good for knowing exactly, you know, how much and who it was sold to and when. So, you know, like the amount of tracking is quite extensive. And as far as transport, there's two dispensary agents in the car at all times. You have to have live GPS monitoring, you have to have a live connection, whether by phone or some other method, to the cultivation and processing facility. You have to plan your route ahead of time. If you deviate from your route, you have to inform the Department of Public Health within 24 hours. We'd be happy to inform local law enforcement with all that stuff too. You keep all your shipping manifests and everything for a minimum of 180 days. So there's, you know, the regulations for transportation are thorough and extensive and they're making sure that you, that you've really planned everything you do ahead of time. So I think that's valuable. Another super valuable aspect of having- Another super valuable aspect of having a retail facility in your, in your town is the fact that right now there's something called a hardship cultivation registration. I don't know if the selectmen are aware of that, but, so when you, when you hear hardship, one thinks automatically financial hardship, and that's certainly one kind of hardship, but there's also an access hardship under state law. And so right now, any medical marijuana patient anywhere in the state, the Department of Public Health isn't even keeping track, but any medical marijuana patient can grow their own marijuana in their closet, in their basement, as long as they can call it an enclosed and locked facility, they're doing it legally right now. So if Seven Point were to open here, they would deliver to patients in a secure manner with the two people in the car and the GPS and the planning the route and all, but nobody would be growing legally here or anywhere around here anymore. It ends the hardship cultivation registration. And then as far as financial hardship, they'd be able, they'd sell small amounts to patients who couldn't afford to buy their own medicine at a financial, at a financial discount, small amounts. You don't sell them a lot so they could turn around and resell it, but small amounts. So that eliminates the financial hardship as well. So citing a dispensary in your town beyond the jobs and, and the tax revenue and the local control, because one eventually will be around here anyway, there's also eliminating that totally unregulated cultivation, which is almost certainly going on right now in the town, and nobody even knows about it. And so that eliminates that legally anyway. Certainly it can still happen illegally, but that eliminates the legal cultivation.
One, one more thing I just want to add. I wasn't fortunate enough to be in the meeting with the chiefs that some of my team met with, but, you know, we're, we're excited to, to have the interest of the police and the fire department, and we would love to work closely with them when it got closer to that point where we're actually building on our facility if it was here. And, you know, I, I'm very confident in the last two years, my little educational experience I've gotten in this with security and, and all, and all that, you know, that we'll be able to plan exactly what's needed with, with the state requirements, but we will 100% be working with local law enforcement to come in and give us those kind of little extra hints or extra information that they have from their own experience about whatever kind of buildings there are, and we'll welcome whatever input and advice and implement any additional ideas that, whether they're required or not by the state, because, you know, we really just want to just be a secure, safe facility in every way. It's, it's important for, for us, too. We'll be there, and our patients will be there, and the community, for everyone to feel secure, even if it's maybe a little bit, you know, overkill in some cases with, with these state requirements, but it's important for everyone to feel safe.
There's six facilities open right now in the Commonwealth, two only in the last few weeks, but the four that were open, starting in the middle of last year, I think the first one opened in June, Alternative Therapy, Alternative Therapies Group in Salem, there haven't been, there hasn't been one issue with any of those facilities. There hasn't been one break-in, one theft, one, one anything. There hasn't been any issue at all. So that's, it's, it's sort of new en masse, but there is some track record at least we can look at.
There's 28 now, I think, open and running, from, they're maybe one day old or three months old in Illinois, and there's been no incidents at all.
Barbara, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I'm just wondering, because, you know, we're, we're on the Hampshire border, do you have to be a Mass, do you only sell to Mass residents, and do you only take prescriptions from Mass doctors?
Yes, and yes.
Okay.
So you, you, it has to be a Massachusetts physician, you have to be a Massachusetts resident.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, actually, pardon, I have a couple of questions. First of all, the note, the prior, the prior board had written a letter of support or non-opposition. When was that? Do we, just approximately? Anyone remember?
It was before, it was before November of 2013, because that's when
Okay.
the applications were submitted, so
The DHP, yeah.
It was somewhere in the, in the, the middle part of, of 2013.
Okay. And that was for a cultivation, not dispensing? Okay, just want to clarify that. Number two, I, I know we've talked about, like, in the zoning and such, retail store. I can imagine people listening, saying, "Oh, retail store, great." But just to reiterate, it is only for patients with a prescription through a licensed medical doctor?
Correct.
Okay.
But technically, I just want to say they're not called prescriptions because
Okay.
prescriptions are for federally legal drugs, and so this is really a certification by a physician. A Massachusetts physician would sign a form, submit it, I think electronically, to the, to the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and along with the application from, from the patient themselves. And then they would be issued a card if they meet the requirements of the state.
So it has to be a licensed physician, they have to use a prescription monitoring program, so they actually have to check what, what opiates you're also taking and make sure it's appropriate for you to be a medical use of marijuana patient. They have to do eight hours of continuing medical education in substance abuse and prevention, and they also have to register with the Department of Public Health and pay an annual fee, I think it's $500 for them.
And this is the doctor you're referring to, right?
These are the doctors, yeah. So there's even actually oversight with the doctors, too, as well as the fact they have to be a Massachusetts licensed physician.
Right.
Unlike states like California where you can virtually get a certification or a recommendation over Skype, in Massachusetts, a doctor has to review your complete medical history, which is nice. You have to have an ongoing relationship with the doctor as well. So that's at least a couple visits in the, in, in a year, as opposed to in California, it's just this to, you know, people, you know, think about the Wild West and think about that medical marijuana program, it's just not what we have here. The, the doctors, when we were rolling out the program here in 2012 and 13, had a lot of input into, into how it would be rolled out. The Massachusetts Medical Society, 25,000 doctors or so, so there was a, that was a big, that was a, a big part of it. So it's a lot more oversight, and it's a lot harder to become a patient. The other people that will be in there, of course, are the patient's caregivers. So if somebody can't get there, you can designate one person to act as your caregiver, and that person can't make any money from you. So they're just showing up, a true caregiver, you know, "I'm taking care of my mom," because, so that, that kind of idea is how, how it might work. So those are the people that would be allowed inside, as, other than, you know, local law enforcement and our employees.
Sure.
Which are all background checked, by the way. Incredible, extensive background check with state, federal, Corey, internet, they look at your Facebook, everything.
Yeah. Okay, great, thank you. Also, you know, I went online and I downloaded your management and operations profile for Seven Point. Interesting reading, reading about, you know, the steps of cultivation, the best practices of growing and such like that. It is redacted, so, but one of the, the first things that come to my mind, you mentioned, Brad, I think you used, used the term, there's about 25,000 patients in Massachusetts currently. I imagine that, that's going to fluctuate and stuff like that. Why a border town? Why north central Massachusetts?
Well, in, in this area, there haven't been a, a great deal of information that we're aware of, of other dispensary companies, so we're looking to go into areas that provide access. We are also looking at other areas and other parts of the state that are not borders and different borders. But, you know, it, it really becomes a factor of, you know, and I'm, I'm not from Massachusetts, so I, I know there's 351 towns and cities here. So there's really, there's, there's a wide array of towns and cities that you could pick. However, there's 15 that were already approved back in 2014 or whenever that was, so, so those, there's 15 towns there.
15 dispensaries?
15 dispensaries.
Okay, yeah.
And so, and then, you know, we read the newspaper here, all the papers, and we see different dispensaries going into different towns requesting these letters. I don't know if, if you all read those kinds of articles, but we do. And so we're taking note, you know, just, we're business people, we're taking note of our competition and, and where they're going. And so that sort of eliminates a lot of areas if we know that certain towns or cities issued letters to those people. Makes it tough to go to those towns again.
Understand that, yeah.
And then, and then maybe some of those neighboring towns, maybe we're not interested in those either.
Right.
And so you, and then you sort of look at, well, which towns set super restrictive policies and bylaws? So maybe we're not going to want to go for those towns either because it's going to be difficult. Probably they made it restrictive for a reason. There's towns like Winchandon that could have made this restrictive and created bylaws that, you know, made it really a very small area, but you didn't do that. Similar to where we landed in Illinois with our dispensary, that village didn't do that either. And so we felt like they may be more open to it than others, and, and, and for us, in really, this is, medical marijuana is the, is arguably the most restrictive industry from a zoning perspective in the world. Period. There's, there's no other. So we have to consider all these different factors, and it just sort of takes us into different areas, but we have noted that seemingly this area is, has less access from other dispensaries trying to get such letters, and that's interesting to us, that seems like an opportunity where we can come in and serve some patients in this area.
Okay.
So I think for all those reasons, a little bit here, a little bit there.
Do you have a sense of how many patients you would be serving?
How many would want to come see us?
Correct.
Probably about 1,100 unique patients for a year is, is somewhere the number. The problem is right now, we don't know, so when they first passed the law, it was minimum one per county, max five per county, with a total of 35 as the max for the Commonwealth. That's out the window at the end of 2013. So we don't know how many and where, in the long run, the Department of Public Health is going to put these things. And that's why it's particularly important for a company that doesn't, you know, wants to be able to continue to serve patients, is to look for pockets in the Commonwealth where there's less access for patients, and that's part, part, as Brad has explained, why Winchandon is attractive to Seven Point. But we don't know what the department's going to do. And in fact, you know, they've said cities and towns are going to open these up like, or the department will allow licenses like Walgreens and CVS. So if a city or a town says, "I don't care," so Framingham, for instance, well, Framingham issued three letters, one of them was for one of our clients, they just, you know, so we don't know. And so it's tough to give an exact number, but it's somewhere around, you know, 800 to 1,400, 1,100 patients, somewhere around there, unique patients in a year.
Okay. I think that's it for the moment. Thank you.
I was wondering, is it covered by insurance?
Unfortunately, there's no requirement that insurance covers it. I'm waiting for a private insurer to step up and start paying for people's cannabis. It's certainly, you know, I have, I've had people come in my office with, and I use MS as an example because there's been some studies now internationally that show that it actually slows the progression of the disease as opposed to just being palliative. I've had people come into my office and they're actually off their Biogen infusion treatments because of using cannabis. So if I was an insurance company, I would be pretty receptive to paying for marijuana for, for an insured versus, those infusion treatments are, are very, very expensive. So, but right now, no, it's not covered by insurance, and I don't know of any private health insurance companies that are paying for cannabis treatment for their patients. I would guess that the first ones would be for children suffering from those seizure conditions, that would probably be the, what breaks the ice there.
Interesting, thank you. Mr. Hickey, anything?
Ma'am.
I think, can we take this under advisement and then revisit it?
Sure. Again, if the board is interested in, and is comfortable with, with at least pursuing the, the site that they proposed at this point, we can sit, let's sit down with them and get, dig a little bit deeper on the security issues and, and the impacts to the, the town resources, and make sure everybody's comfortable with moving forward and, and bring something back to the board in a, in a future date to make a more formal discussion and decision.
I, I think that would be appropriate. I think it would be difficult for us to really make a decision tonight. I think, especially with, you know, all this information and, and your presentation, I think it would be wiser for us to think about this a little more and maybe come back to this in, in the next meeting or so, after we kind of learn more about it and, and think about what, what we talked about tonight. So I would encourage my other board members to, to agree.
I have to say, I didn't even think of the bike path, because I think of that as being kind of an exclusionary area.
Yeah, but it's, it is far enough, so it does
Legally.
...that requirement. Correct.
Well, that won't stop any, if we were to wait, that, that won't stop anything with you, you're, you're not
Is that correct?
Well, we would look forward to sitting down with Mr. Hickey and any members of the town that wanted to. I believe that was what Mr. Hickey discussed at the earlier part of the meeting, was if the board were to take it under advisement to have another opportunity for us to sit down with the town manager and sort of figure out, you know, what impacts there may be, how Seven Point could help to offset those, just work out any other details, maybe get, if we need to further detail into security. I know that there's definitely an issue with making any detailed security plans sort of public, but we'll, we'll be working with the police chief, you know, in, in the event that we were able to move forward. All of our security plans will go through the, the chief's office and, you know, so, but I, I believe, and we would welcome the opportunity to come back and, and speak with Mr. Hickey and keep moving things forward in the town and getting on the, the next appropriate agenda, hopefully sooner rather than later, and we could keep moving forward.
But if I may, just to answer your question, you said that won't, we'll keep moving forward. We are not moving forward. There's nothing for us to move forward with until we're able to secure letters of non-opposition and support.
I guess my question, you're not on a strict time, well, you didn't need it tonight.
We don't need it tonight. We're not going to try to rush you into any decisions, so we would welcome to answer more questions. You could Google my name and the word dispensary, and you'll see 50 or 100 newspaper articles. I think they're pretty positive, and just speak to exactly what we're doing in Illinois without hearing it from me. So we would welcome that and would love to come back for another meeting.
I think just the business in itself is so new, so very different from anything else that we ever deal with, that a little bit more research, I would like the opportunity to do a little bit more research, and again, speak with Mr. Hickey and Chief Walsh, just to, so that I'm very comfortable with my decision.
So, Mr. Hickey, you'll, you'll be in communication with us on what you hear back and
Mm-hmm.
any new research you find? Okay. Because ultimately, it comes back to us and we, we make that final decision, right?
Absolutely correct. Yep.
And we will make sure we do this sooner rather than later. We absolutely know time is of the essence for you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much for seeing us.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
That's a great proposition.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's about, you know, their backgrounds and body control, the stuff.
I learned a lot actually from tonight, too.
Yeah.
I learned more than I ever thought I had to.
All right. Yeah, back to, oh my goodness, it's already nine, oh my goodness. I don't think we have too much left, do we?
Yeah.
Oh my God, come on back, let's get them in. Okay. Mr. Hickey, you ready?
Thank you very much again.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, good night.
Good night.
I think we are on to the recommended fee changes
Mm-hmm.
proposal?
Yes. Madam Chair, members of the board, I am, I am handing, handing out now just an updated proposed fee schedule from the one you have in your packet. It might, it was my mistake, I inadvertently forgot to include four different charges under the fire department that we'll, that we'll go over, starting with the fire alarm monitoring and working way down, fire alarm monitoring, fire ambulance reports, trench, fireworks display, excuse me, trench permits, underground storage tanks, installation and removal. Those are, those are some additional fees that we currently charge now. Those are some additional fees that we currently charge now, that I inadvertently left off the schedule, so I apologize for that. And I want to just hand it out for the board's consideration this evening. So, what you have in your board packet tonight is some recommended changes to the fee schedule that we're currently charging. As part of the budget preparation for the fiscal seventeen budget, I asked the department to take a look at the fees that are charged by the town and the departments that charge them. What you have in front of you this evening are the departments that have had the predominance of the proposed changes, both police and fire. We've looked at other charges, billing permits, things of that nature. Those fees right now are competitive with what other communities around us are charging and/or on the higher end, so we didn't think it was appropriate to bring those forward. Some of the fees that you have in front of you haven't been changed for a number of years, sometimes in some cases, five to ten years themselves. So, what I've done is highlighted in yellow the changes that we're proposing to make as part of the fiscal seventeen budget. And I can go through those one at a time if you'd like, or I can, we can answer questions. What I asked the department to do this evening in this preparation was take a look and determine what the costs were associated with performing the services that they provide, based on the fees that are charged, to make sure we're at least covering our expenses. And also, take a look at some area communities and to determine what those area communities are charging for some of these fees. So, a lot of the fees that you see are not increasing by much. Some of the issues with, we've had a number of issues over the last week or so with storage of registered vehicles, for example. We've had a lot of complaints. We send the police department over to deal with those. At this point, right now, there's a five-dollar charge to do that. Candidly, it's not covering our expenses at all. The chief's done some analysis on, again, cost and other communities, and we're proposing in that case to increase it from five to twenty-five dollars. It's also more of a deterrent. If somebody's being charged five dollars and there's a risk, they may or may not be ticketed for it, they're more apt to take the risk. Where if it's a twenty-five dollars, they may think twice about not complying with local ordinance. So, again, there's a number of different parking violations that were proposed, the increase anywhere from five and currently five to twenty dollars, up to twenty-five dollars, increasing, for example, obstructing snow removal from twenty-five to fifty, parking during a snow emergency from twenty-five to fifty, just to, again, cover our expenses and try to be more proactive in making sure that people comply with the town ordinances that are in place. Working our way down through, one of the things that the town clerk, town clerk, I probably really should say tax clerk, that's why I apologize, tax collector, demand letters that are currently sent out to anybody who's going to pass through property tax bill, motor vehicle excise tax, water sewer bill. Right now, we're charging and have been charging for quite some time, five dollars per letter. The state allows us to charge up to thirty dollars a letter. There's some documentation, I think, supporting the proposal to move it to fifteen. Many, many communities charge thirty dollars a letter. We felt that was somewhat punitive and a significant change in moving from five directly to thirty, so we're suggesting moving it from five to fifteen. Some of the pouring licenses, again, we looked at some of the communities around us, felt as though we were on the low end of the community, so we're looking to increase the beer and wine pouring license from three fifty to five hundred dollars, and the all alcohol clubs from five fifty to eight hundred dollars. Again, jukeboxes, air hockey from twenty-five to thirty-five, pool tables from twenty-five to thirty-five, large-scale photocopies. We have the ability in town to produce large-scale, you know, documents, planning documents, development proposals, things of that nature, site plans. It's costing us the cost of personnel, toner and paper, more money, so we're proposing a modest increase from four to five dollars for those.
Do you think that's...
And we think that's fair.
Five dollars?
Yep, we think that's fair.
Okay.
So, on the second page, the proposals for the ambulance rates, at first blush, looked pretty significant as far as increases go, but they're really not. And I'll tell you why, and Chief Smith can fill in most of the blanks that I leave. Most insurance companies now are paying based on a combined pooled rate. Historically, ambulance billing has been done on kind of an à la carte basis. You have an ambulance call for advanced life support, there's a flat fee for that. You're given an IV, there's a fee for that. You're given oxygen, there's a fee for that. You're hooked up to a heart monitor, there's a fee for that. What insurance companies are looking for at this point is more of a packaged, all-one charge for a basic ALS or BLS rate. So, what the chief has done is he's taken a look at what we're charging right now for an advanced life support rate, which is eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and then we add to that IVs, oxygen, cardiac monitoring, things of that nature. And it really adds up, and what we're proposing is to do a combined rate, for example, for an ALS rate, moving from eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars to fifteen hundred and forty-four dollars. However, there would be no à la carte charges to that. The only, there would be charges for mileage, just like there are now, and those mileage charges don't change. There is a five percent, about a five percent increase in the fees that are being proposed tonight in the ambulance fee schedule that you have in front of you. And again, those are, have been recommended to be adjusted based on conversations the chief has had with our billing company that supports a number of Massachusetts communities for billing, as well as speaking to insurance companies and getting information from our billing company about what the insurance company's expectations are. Moving to a fee schedule like this for the ambulance services, we believe will increase collection rates than what we've had in the past, that will obviously help our cash flow and revenues coming in the door. So, I know it's a lot of information to digest this evening. We've, again, we've taken a look at all of our revenues, what we collect. Next year, if I've got a little bit more time, I'd like to have a complete list of everything we bill and identify to the board what we're recommending for potential changes in fees and what we're not. Candidly, at this point, I just didn't have the time to do every department and what we charge, but we've got the larger ones. And like I mentioned, we did look at other large generating sources like building permits and those fees, and we just couldn't justify an increase for those. The Planning Board and the Zoning Board also had a brief discussion. At this point, the Planning Board's not interested in increasing their fees. The Zoning Board, at this point, is also, I believe, they discussed it at the last Zoning Board meeting, they're also not looking to increase their fees at this particular time. And those two boards have the authority, as does the Health, the Board of Health, to set their fees. The Board of Health is still investigating whether or not they can, they want to make recommendations to change their fees. With the chairman being out for an extended period of time, I expect that process to be delayed a bit, so I didn't bring those proposed fees forward as part of the fiscal seventeen budget. What I'm hoping this evening is the board has enough information to make a decision this evening on the proposed fees that we have in front of you this evening, so we can incorporate those fees and this fee schedule into my proposed fiscal seventeen estimated revenues and ultimate budget that I present next week. So, with that, I've asked, because there's so much information, I've asked both the Fire Chief and the Police Chief here this evening to answer any questions that you may have, and I'm happy to provide whatever information I can provide to you as well. Thank you for your time to allow us to make this presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? I'm good. Anyone? Actually, I have a question. I know ALS, what's BLS?
Basic Life Support.
Basic Life Support.
EMTs versus the paramedics.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
I have a question. The auditors were in the other week, and they were very concerned with our collections for the ambulance. And by changing this fee over, and of course, I had to do the math, by changing the fee over to what Mr. Hickey has done, do you think that will improve our collections on ambulance?
The auditors were concerned with the collections or the write-off policy?
If I could just try to clarify, Madam Chair. So, the auditors were here a couple of weeks ago, their concern was that we had some very old receivable balances that needed to be cleaned up. Making a change in the fee schedule won't clear that up. One of the things that I'd like to see tried to be, I'd like to see addressed and expect to be addressed before June thirtieth is adopting a, we've proposed an ambulance billing policy that we're working on, and the chief is working on an ambulance billing write-off policy that we can bring to the board for your consideration and potential approval. Once we have that, we can then go back to the list. As Mr. Rosselli mentioned when he was here a couple of weeks ago, there are some that just are years and years old, that we need to bring a list forward to the board for a recommended write-off of those ambulance receivables, to try to get our receivable list current and actually reflect what we believe we have a chance in collecting. Most of our receivables right now in the books are so old, the chances of collecting those are slim and none.
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
If I may, to Chief Walsh, Mr. Hickey alluded to the last few weeks with, I think it was unregistered vehicles.
Yes.
Just something that's new or just finally being able to crack down?
It's nothing new. We address it periodically, there's complaints.
Okay.
As far as recently, we have had, there's usually an increase in the springtime, obviously when the vehicle's covered with snow, there's not so much of an issue. But, it has been increasing, so, again, just reiterating what Mr. Hickey said, at five dollars for a permit, it's almost ridiculous not to ask for one. So, I think by increasing it to the twenty-five, it's not a drastic increase, but it's increased enough that you're going to take note of it.
That would be per...
If it's necessary, you'll pay the fee, but if it's not necessary, you remove the car.
That would be per vehicle.
Correct. Per year.
Yep. Great. I'm just curious, parking more than twelve feet from a curb. Right, that would put you in the middle of the road or on the other side, wouldn't it? Or am I, I have a mental image that's not right?
Twelve inches.
Should it be twelve inches?
It is twelve inches.
Okay.
I have to defer to Mr. Hickey on an explanation on that.
I apologize for the...
That's fine. That's a good point. Yeah.
A big curb.
Yeah, really. Okay. That makes sense.
Is that enforced? I mean, how, do you go around kind of measuring with a ruler? Or is it kind of come like a complaint type of thing?
It would be. The majority of the parking violations, in all honesty, are not, there's not a lot of enforcement on the parking violations. The major violations we're concerned about, obviously, is crosswalks, handicap, but it is normally generated by complaints. The major amount of parking tickets that we, or parking issue that we address is the parking ban, which in this particular section, it's parking when restricted, it's a five-dollar increase. With that said, you can see that that would be the parking ban. And what we're trying to do by addressing that through the parking ban is have the cars removed before there's a snow emergency. Obviously, you can see the fees are substantially higher, if there actually is a snow emergency or if you're obstructing snow removal.
Okay.
I think something that I see, and I kind of, I don't know, I think it was interesting, because I see people sometimes park on the sidewalk so that they can say they're not on the street during the parking ban. And I think, wow, that's just not good, because then people have to go out in the street. And I've seen it more than once. So, yeah, I mean, you would think a normal person would know better than to do that, but they don't. They think they're finding that loophole. So, I like that, you know, we have something there.
I'd urge the public, if they see something like that, to call the police department. They'd be happy to address that.
Yes.
Well, usually, I just shake my head and go, "Wow."
Now, these days, take a picture of the license plate.
That's true.
I have no further questions.
What is, to the Fire Chief, what is a trench permit?
A trench permit would be if you were to be installing a, say, a water pipe on your property, you'd be digging a trench down, it has to be at least three feet wide with at least two feet up. You have to put certain angles when you actually dig it. It has to be secured so that with the fencing around it, so that no children fall into it. Basically, stems from a death that happened, I believe, down the Cape. Again, reactive law, but it's a permit that, so we kind of hold the contractors to a standard so that we can go out and inspect it and make sure that the proper safety is followed for the community.
Right. And then, if I'm not mistaken, the underground storage tank, because these fees have gone up substantially, the underground storage tank installation or removal, didn't we, don't we have a bylaw that says that all underground storage tanks were supposed to have been removed?
There's something in the bylaw, I think.
No, it's actually a process of registering them through the town, and after a certain timeframe, then they need to be removed.
So, they are still legal?
Twenty years to the twenty-first year, then they have to be looked into, or show that they have proper. But, this is more to, just due to the increased man-hours, we have to go out on removals, we not only go out to, we permit it, and we also have to go out and inspect it when it's coming out of the ground, ensure that the, you know, there's no leakage visible that a licensed site professional has, examine the soil and that. So, there are a number of different stages, and that's just gone up throughout the, has become more restrictive, and we have to make more visits out there, so that's what we're looking to incorporate with this.
I think the only one that, and I think it's just really a matter of semantics, is the ALS rate, you know, to see that number, because it's a huge number. And I think I would choke a little bit.
I think, if I can just say a little bit on that, I think the numbers large, and it looks large, but when you add the others in that we use on every ALS call, the number's actually the same. Basically, what the bundle billing is, is when we bundle bill it, it's more so to improve our collections on, by doing that versus actually what we're charging on that. So, we've actually combined the à la carte items to make one bundled bill, and that makes it us, it increases what we are able to collect when we bill it out to your private insurance companies. You have Medicare and Medicaid, which eighty percent of our community has for our ambulance calls, pays a set amount. We could bill five thousand dollars for the call, and they're still paying their three ninety-eight.
Right.
So, that does not change. This would be, this change would more so affect what we, how we bundle bill our private insurance companies. We'd still obviously bill out the same because we can't make a, we can't bill one group one and one the other, but it's still, Medicare and Medicaid would still pay what their set rates are, and that's it. There is no change in that. So, it's just more of semantics, how we added them together versus having them all à la carte.
Okay. Anything else? Should we make a motion to accept the case?
Yes, and I don't know how the chief feels about this, but I guess I'm looking to have these effectives July first of sixteen, so it wouldn't be effective until then if the board chooses to vote that way.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Yes?
I move that the board approve the proposed changes in the townwide fee schedule, with said changes to be effective July first, two thousand and sixteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your work and putting this...
Thank you both.
Thank you.
And the water shut-off policy?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, the board recalls, the last meeting, we brought forward a... Al Galant and I, the Public Works Director, brought forward a proposal to adopt a water shut-off policy. There were some concerns raised by the board at that meeting, and so Al and I went back and included the issues that I believe were raised at that meeting into the proposed water shut-off policy that you have in front of you. We've also expanded it a bit to have it reflect Mass state law in some locations and took a look at some other communities' water shut-off policies and just provided a more detailed policy that identifies when a town employee can go into a building, the timeframes that are required to notify people who may be having their water shut off. It addresses both placing a door hanger, like the board asked, so if you have a tenant in a building versus a property owner, they've been made aware. It talks about the fact that Public Works employees can enter a property between the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:00 in the afternoon to remove, disconnect a meter pipe or fitting for the purpose of shutting off the water. So, I think we've addressed the issues that the board had last meeting and would ask the board to consider adopting this water shut-off policy to be put in effect once we move to quarterly billing later this calendar year. I guess I'd say one last thing, I apologize. Again, I think Al and I tried to emphasize the last time we made the presentation, we aren't looking to harm anybody. There was some concerns over children, over some of the elderly, and we understand and respect that. We want to work with people to establish payment plans, things of that nature. But again, I think what we found, if you look at our list of uncollected water and sewer billing individuals, they're not who you might think they are. They're not elderly. Those individuals, just like with property taxes, if they get a bill tomorrow, they'll be in, you know, on Wednesday to make that payment typically. So, if people are unable to make their full payment, again, we're not trying to be punitive here, we want to work with you. We just need to have some type of agreement put in place that the tax collective can support, that the property owner can afford, and there'll be no disruption in their service. Right now, you know, we've got unpaid property... Excuse me, unpaid water and sewer bills that are upwards of two and three years old. And again, it affects our... It affects the town's cash flow and operations.
Yeah, so that's like $600,000?
Yes, ma'am.
In arrears, yeah.
And one semi-annual billing was $600,000. Yes, I believe that's the number that was used the last time for the spring billing.
Mr. Mori?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Mori, Vice Chairman, Board of Health. My question is, and it calls to a question that we had earlier in the day. I'm not familiar with the policy here, but is there any notification to the Health Department of the water being shut off in this policy?
There is not, but we could certainly add that.
My recommendation would be to add it, just because the state sanitary code does state that you have to have running water in order for the home to be habitable. So, if we do shut off the water and there's no intent to pay, then technically speaking, the house is in violation of the state sanitary code and is no longer habitable. So, just a notification to the health agent of water being shut off, which will notify us and the board, and then we can assist in taking action if needed.
How far in advance would you need to know? Like, when the initial notices are sent out, just to say, hey, you're in arrears, you've got to pay, or you're past date, we're going out to shut tomorrow?
With the 15-day.
Yeah, I think when you guys are making your final notification to the landowners or to the tenants, just so it gives our health agent enough time to take action and to notify the board. Our board only meets once a month, but the health agent has at his full right and ability the actions that he can take, and he can certainly assist in the process as much as the state sanitary code allows.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, do you want the Board of Health notified, or do you want the Health Officer notified?
I... For clarification, I would say both. Health Agent or the Health Department and the Board of Health, because we are two separate. But the health agent is tasked with enforcing the state sanitary code, and we're more or less supporting a body for him.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Can I ask one... I'm sorry, can I ask one more question? I apologize, I apologize. So, would a list of property owners and address be sufficient to you? Or what information are you looking for in that notification?
At the bare minimum, a location. If names are available and open for release, then that's fine, considering ours would be in public knowledge. Other than that, you know, we at least need to know that notification to... For his sake, it wouldn't matter whether there's children or elderly involved, because it's... As long as there's a living person in that home, everything falls under.
So, name and address?
Name and address, yes. And exactly, you know, if it's... Obviously, if it's an apartment versus a home or something like that, we need to know specific.
Yeah, we'll provide to you, if it's okay with the board, we'll provide the actual domicile address. So, if it's, you know, 10 Front Street, Apartment 1 or Apartment A, whatever information we have in our billing system, we will absolutely provide to the Board of Health and the health agent.
Okay, and then the anticipated day of shut-off, if that's not clear on the paperwork, that'll help with us.
Absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Yes?
Regarding the door hanger, you know, I don't imagine you've got it designed yet or anything, but I think it would be important, because reading through the MGL, it states that the occupants of such building have a right to pay the amount due or such portion thereof prescribed by regulation of the department and thereby avoid cessation of service and to recover the amount so paid from the person to whom they would otherwise pay their rent. I think it would be helpful to put that somewhere on the hanger.
Sure.
So that the tenants know that they have, you know, other than just, you know, coming down on their landlord, they have a recourse of... It's on the second to the last page, page one of two, Part 1, Title 22, under D, Section 11E, and then D.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question, that's the only point I had.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I would just like to... That even like the original termination notice, I'd like to see that go certified as well.
We...
You know, no, it's just because... Well, no, it's after... They have to be 50 days late, because I've had, even this weekend alone, a couple of people say to me, they never got their water bill. No one knows whatever happened to the water bill. It seems to have disappeared.
Sure. So, we... I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, no.
So, we had that conversation internally, and the concern that the Public Works Director had, just to share with the board, is because of the sheer number of people who we're sending these letters to, included my budget, I think, as the board is probably aware, is by moving to quarterly billing, we're looking to hire a part-time support staff person to assist the existing support person in Public Works that does the water and sewer billing. Their concern, and I think it's a fair one, is it is going to be incredibly time-consuming four times a year to fill out and send those letters certified. I understand and respect the rationale for wanting to do so. I think by going the extra step and putting door hangers on people's doors, if they didn't get the bill, ideally, you'd like to think they're going to get a door hanger. Is it as foolproof as a certified letter? It's not.
See, I'm thinking more of the people don't live in the property.
Sure. Yeah, again, it's really just, it was a matter of...
The owners who don't live in the property, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, and again, you know, the... Well, if we add the language to the door hanger that says that there's a tenant on the property, has the ability to come in and pay the past due bill, and then go back and try to recover that money from the property owner, would that satisfy your concern? Again, I think it makes... In a perfect world, I'd love to send certified letters. The issue that we have is candidly just trying to make sure we get those certified letters out in a timely manner. What I... Maybe what we could do is revisit the policy in six months. If we're having problems where we're getting a lot of people saying, I didn't know my water's going to be shut off, then maybe we can move. I really think that once we send letters out and the water unfortunately gets shut off to a few people, the first quarter that this happens, the amount of our delinquencies, the number of our delinquencies will go way down. If we see that, we can certainly come back to the board and say, I think it might make some sense to go to certified mailings, so there aren't the few people who say, hey, I never knew. Again, we don't want that to happen. We want to make sure that if we have to shut somebody's water off, they're absolutely well aware, and they've exercised every option available to them, whether it be a payment plan or what have you, to not have a disruption in their water service.
Okay, as long as you tell me that that will happen.
That will happen.
Okay. Because that's my biggest concern.
I appreciate that.
Is that, you know, someone's... Someone's responsible for this program, and someone, by the time they go to cut that water off, you know, for, you know, the person in charge takes full responsibility and knows that they've been properly notified, because, you know, shutting off the water could, you know, potentially cause a lot of damage to a property or, you know. So, if we're going to do that, we've got to make sure that we follow the procedure.
And again, I guess I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. So, the letters themselves, the past due letters themselves will go to the property owners, whether they live on the property or not.
Yeah.
We'll also put door hangers out, so if a property owner is not... Isn't living on the property and the tenant's living there, the tenant will be aware that the property owner may need a phone call to say, hey, Mr. and Mrs. Jones, you know, I've got a water shut-off notice for next week. What's going on? I can't have my water shut off, and that would hopefully address that. But we'll take a look at it in six months. I hope that we see a significant reduction in the number of delinquent accounts, and if we're getting people coming in and saying, look, we're having a real issue, we didn't know that the water's being shut off, we can absolutely bring that back to the board, have a conversation, and if the board wants to see certified letters go out, we're happy to do it.
I can honestly say I've had more people approach me that they were a little bit upset that some people don't pay and nothing's done about it.
Oh, yeah, no, it is. And you know what, too? Because I gave this a lot of thought, like I said, over the weekend and things, and I know from doing taxes that I have a lot of clients that have Schedule E, they have rental property, and if they don't pay one expense, they know right away, because it shows the minute, you know, as soon as... Especially when you, you know, go to file your tax returns and you have all these expenses, they know how much money they're making from that property. And if they weren't paying the water and sewer, it wasn't by mistake.
Right.
Because they... You could see by the numbers that it doesn't make sense. So, you know, they know. It's just... I just want to make sure we cover ourselves legally for notice, that's all.
I agree.
Hi.
So... Are we ready?
Because that was moved, seconded. Oh, no, it's not, sorry. Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve the Town of Winston Water Shut-Off Policy as presented with the two changes. One, with notification being sent to the Board of Health and the health agent of the potential properties being impacted. And two, that on the door hanger, the tenants are advised of their rights under Mass general law to pay the bill and then seek redress from their landlords.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right. Town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of things that I want to make the board aware of that wasn't in my report that was included in the board packet. Public Works Director came to me last Thursday and told me that he had some unexpendited funds in some line items.
Excuse me, who came to you?
Public Works Director.
Okay, thank you.
He is... He asked, and I approved, the hiring of a temporary highway operator to help with spring cleanup between now and June 30th. At June 30th, if there are... If there's no money budget for that position, that employee in the position ends. Just a reminder that we've hired the Assistant Town Account. She starts a week from today, on the 21st of March. We're excited to have her. We remain having the former Assistant Town Account coming in two or three times a week, processing payroll... Excuse me, processing accounts payable and assisting the Town Account where she can. So, we've appreciated that very much, but we're looking forward to having that individual start. If the board... The board may have been aware that the Planning Board Chair has allowed Brandywine to come in to the Planning Board meeting on Wednesday evening to update the board on their project. I was notified this morning by the owners of Brandywine that they are seeking a delay or postponement. They aren't quite ready to come in front of the Planning Board, so that if anybody's interested in seeing what that project's all about on Wednesday evening at the Planning Board meeting, that will not occur. They haven't set a date yet when they're coming back. I sent to the board this afternoon a draft advertisement for the Town Account position. What I'm hoping is the board can provide any feedback you may have in the advertisement that I've drafted, so I can try to get that out to the papers and the Mass Municipal Association this week and start the process of looking to replace our existing Town Accountant. So, if there's any... Because this is a town... They do answer to the Board of Selectmen, they don't answer to the Town Manager. They have day-to-day supervision of the Town Manager that's been suggested by the Mass DOR, but this is an employee, contracted employee with... By the Board of Selectmen or employed by the Board of Selectmen. I'd want to come back later on this month and talk about how you want to process... What process you want to use in hiring that individual, whether you want to have, you know, a committee of a couple of board members, a couple of school committee members, the collector, treasurer, whoever, and try to formalize that. You'll notice that I've got a date of about two and a half weeks from now to have that come do, so we can try to expect this. What we found with the Assistant Accountant position is people who are interested responded pretty quickly. So, I would expect the same with this, so we can try to get this moving and get a person in here as quickly as we can.
Madam Chair? I have nothing...
Okay.
From my perspective, this looks okay.
I have a question about the salaries, the range there. It's a large range, is that?
It is.
Where did that come from, that range there?
That range came from the agreement with the current Town Accountant when she was hired. That was the range that she was hired in, and the steps... There were steps, I believe, five steps in that range that she would progress through as time went on. So, that's how the range was established, where, as I mentioned in my report this week, I've had a brief conversation with representatives from the community compact. We're trying to get a personnel policy developed, and part of that personnel policy development, I believe, I would hope, would be, you know, salary range, recommended salary ranges of the positions that we have, so we are competitive with, you know, communities surrounding us. But at this point, that's where those numbers came from.
Do you think we should include the range in this advertisement? Do you think maybe we could kind of put something like, what is it, commensurate with upon qualifications or something like that? Because I would be... One thing I would worry about is someone would come in seeing that higher number, and that's immediately... higher number, and that's immediately what they request.
Sure.
I don't know if that would be smarter for us to, you know, kind of be a little bit more ambiguous about our salary.
Sure, so I think it's, I mean, again, it's a board decision, from my point of view, it's a double-edged sword, people, people may come in and say, you know, I want the $74,000 right at the top of the range, and it'd be up to, you know, I think the board ultimately to decide whether or not they can justify that. You may not get people, you may have people who are going to assume, who knows what the range is, I'm not going to, I'm not going to bother to plug, because it's going to be nowhere near what the range is. So again, it's a, it's a, I don't think it's a right or a wrong answer to it, it's just a, it's really more of a, you know, what you want to include in the ad and what you don't. I'm not, I'm not married to either suggestion, so it's whatever the board would like to have.
Well, personally, you know, when I look at, I help wanted ad, if there's no salary, you know, starting ad or something there, I may have second thoughts about pursuing it, but that's my...
Yeah.
They have, they have an idea of where it's going to be.
I mean, I don't know why, but that higher number scares me, I don't know why, but, I mean, you could put starting, I don't know, I mean...
At this level of employment, at that professional level...
You know what, too, anyone really interested and qualified for that job, they're going to know what they pay. They do. Anybody, you know, a municipal accountant, they know what the towns pay.
Right.
It's not a big surprise.
No, it's not, it really isn't, I mean, and...
You can Google it.
Yeah, no, they do. And you can go on any town and look at their budget and see what their accountant gets.
It's public record.
Yeah, it's public record. People know.
Let them do the research, I'd rather someone do the research.
Oh, they will.
Yeah, of course they will.
They will.
And they're going to come in with a predetermined, let me see this for a second, here anyway. Might as well be upfront.
Range is starting salary...
Again, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm not trying to be argumentative, my concern with, if you said a starting salary not to exceed, and you've had somebody who came in who was a Town Accountant for a community for X number of years, and the audits that they had done, had, the financial records that had been audited were stellar.
Yeah.
And, you know, they wanted a change, maybe Winston was a bigger community, maybe they're just closer home, whatever it happens to be, do you really want to limit yourself and lose out on a candidate because they say, well, you know, if it was a little bit higher, I'd probably apply for it, and I know the room is there, but they don't want to start me at any higher than X, so I'm not going to bother, I'm not going to go in asking for more money than what they're suggesting they're going to pay, because it's going to come across as, you know...
In your opinion, and I know this is probably just your opinion, but is that higher number, is that, would you say, average for an accountant for the size of this town?
So I would say to you, with limited research, that there are very few communities the size of Winchton that also have a Town Accountant responsible for the school district books. So you've, you have Town Accountants in other communities where $74,000 might be a really high-end number, but they're responsible $12 million worth of appropriations, not closer to 30. So I think so, I think if you, I think if you do a salary survey, and when the salary survey is done, I think you're going to find that the $74,000 is competitive, I don't think it's way out of whack, up or down.
Seems like a lot to me.
Oh, because you're young.
Yes.
Oh, granted, I'd love to make $74,000, but, you know, again, it was the pleasure of the board, so if you guys think to put it in there...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't defeat, I mean, I still think that advertisement's fine, it was just that one thing.
Sure.
I was questioning our population, I thought our population was over 10,000.
I stole it off, off a website, I mean, again, I think it was the last, the last census number was about 900, if it's, I'll put whatever number you'd like.
Go ahead, pick a number, Barbara.
Sorry, wait, when you... When you look at the census, there's two different, they separate like downtown versus the rural parts, but when we did the Town Manager, it was like 10,600 total.
There we go.
Right, which set us, it was, it was that whole, the water...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Pushed us over the edge.
Okay, I don't want to push us over the edge.
Sensitive, we're paying for that, a couple of extra people, so...
Thank you for your, for your input, I appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, get that out and see what comes in.
We'll get it out tomorrow.
Were you done with your report?
I'm done, unless you'd like to, I'm happy to go through everything if you'd like.
Nope.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I have nothing on the minutes, but it prompted a memory, Upper Riverside Cemetery street naming.
Oh, yeah, we never did finish that, did we?
They're going to look for signs, right? They're going to look for signs.
So, yes, so if I could jog my memory for a second, there were signs there.
We're running out of tree names, apparently.
Yes, there were tree names that we were going to have to get very creative with, if we wanted to continue the theme of trees. There were signs at the property, my recollection in talking to the Public Works Director was these signs were primarily signs for the existing cemetery and not the new cemetery, the signs were constructed a number of years ago, and do not address the street naming issue. So in talking to, talking to the Public Works Director last week, he was supposed to go do an inventory of what we had and bring back a recommendation for the board, you'll probably see that on the 28th.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move to approve as presented the minutes of February 15th, 2016.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the chair says aye. And the minutes from February 22nd?
Still being worked on.
Yep. We need to review and confirm the following Monday meeting schedule. March 21st, presentation of the FY '17 General Government Budget. I...
Uh-oh.
I know. Did not put that one in my phone, and then we made a meeting for the Capital Planning Committee on the 21st, because I did double-check that one, and I went, ooh, there might be a conflict there, since we start at 6:30.
Yes, ma'am.
And the other meeting, the Capital Planning starts at 6:00.
Will we try maybe to reschedule the Capital Planning meeting?
Reschedule Capital Planning.
I can, I can try to do that, or you can try to do that, it's up to you.
No, it's fine with me.
Okay, I'll reach out to the...
That'd be great if you could do that.
I'll reach out to the Capital Planning Committee tomorrow and ask if they can reschedule for maybe the following...
The following one.
The following one doesn't work either, I'll try to find a date that works.
Maybe a different day other than Monday?
That'd be good.
Okay. And March 28th, a regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen, April 4th, 2016, the draft annual town meeting warrant, April 11th, 2016, the regular meeting, April 18th, 2016, the vote final for the town meeting warrant, and April 25th, the regular meeting.
The 25th, I am on vacation, will not be around.
You go on vacation?
I'm going, after April 15th, I can. I'm on vacation out of the state, going away.
Okay.
Feel free to meet anyway.
Madam Chair, just one thing, I've, so I'm presenting, presenting my proposed budget to the Board of Selectmen next Monday night, 21st, I am then going to the FinCom the 22nd, just so you're aware, we're going to be inviting the Finance Committee, the Audit Committee, and the School Committee to Monday night's board meeting, if they're interested at all in coming in.
Which Monday night?
Next Monday night.
Next Monday, 21st.
For the budget presentation.
Sorry, 21st, for the budget presentation.
That's the drive board?
If they don't come, it's absolutely fine, but, you know, we want to try to invite them, and if they'd like to participate and be here for that, and sit in the audience and not around a big, huge table, love to have them and let them participate in hearing what we're suggesting.
Me, too. Is there anything else?
Let's do adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and the chair votes aye.
Not sure I can get up.
Oh, I know, my...